We'll see what they say. It's probably West Van and us that preside most of it, so. I think that's a long shot, that one. Although we'll get it back in schools, I think, so. Hi there, I just want to call the public hearing of September 12th to order. Can we have the roll call, please? Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mayor Stewart in the chair. Counselor Carr. Counselor DeGenova is on medical leave. Counselor Frye. Counselor Swanson. Counselor Hardwick. Counselor Weeb. Counselor Boyle. Counselor Dominado not in the chamber. Counselor Bly is on leave of absence for civic business. And Counselor Kirby Young. You have quorum.
Thank you very much. And before we get into the first presentations, just like to acknowledge we're on the traditional unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Slewe tooth. We thank them for having care for these lands and are really enjoying working with them in partnership as we build this great city together. Also like to thank the fantastic staff here at the City of Vancouver that work day in and day out to make this a better place to live. And I can tell you, it gets recognized across the country. So, thank you very much for all your work. Now into a procedural little ditty here. In order to avoid procedural uncertainties which arose at previous public hearings due to loss of quorum while in the Committee of the Hole, the City Clerk has advised that while council is required under eighteen point thirteen of the procedure by law to move a motion to go in the Committee of the Hole at a public hearing, it is not required to sit as a committee of the hole during the hearing. Therefore, it is their advice that the motion to go into the Committee of the Hole be put to a vote and failed by council. Someone like to move a motion, please. Counselor Weeb, seconded by Counselor Carr, thank you very much. All in favor? Opposed? There we go. So, that's failed. Thanks very much. So, before we begin to have some announcements, speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations. This is an important thing to notice because in a recent edition of the Globe and Mail, Carrie Gold, the reporter there erroneously reported that we were cutting our public comments to three minutes, and that is not the case. As dictated by the Vancouver Charter, these sessions, it's always five minutes to hear from the public. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Speakers may only speak once. Any additional comments, however, can be sent in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca. Those speaking on behalf of three or more persons or three or more organizations will have up to eight minutes to speak. The persons or a representative of the organization must also be present, identified, and must not be speakers themselves. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we'll recess and reconvene the meeting on Tuesday, September 17th at 6:00 PM here in Council Chamber. That's Tuesday, September 17th at 6:00 PM. So, we'll move on to our first rezoning application, which is for West 27th Avenue. And it's my understanding that the planning staff, our excellent planning staff, are going to do a presentation for the first five applications, which are all very similar in nature. So, the one presentation will cover all the five applications. And then we will vote on each of them individually, but we can refer to this original presentation for all of them. So, please have the clerk read it out, and away we go.
This is an application by Shape Architecture to rezone 768-780 West 27th Avenue from RS1 District to RM8A District to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. No correspondence was received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list.
Great, thanks. We have Lysia Deserly here from the Rezoning Centre to present on items one to five. So, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Lysia Deserly, rezoning planner from the Planning Centre. Staff are prepared to make a presentation for items one to five. However, there are no speakers and staff have no concerns about these items. So, to the preference of council, this presentation can be waived.
Anybody object to waiving the presentation? Okay, then. We'll go ahead. Thanks very much for that. So, is the applicant team on this first? West 27th Avenue is the applicant team here? Yeah, great. Would you like to speak to this or just be available for questions? Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council to staff or the applicant? And again, this is the part in the hearing process, this is the only portion where you can ask questions of the applicant. Just for this first proposal. Any questions? Okay, thanks. We're going to shift it. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Swanson, I didn't see you on the list. Is it for the applicant or staff?
Staff.
Okay, great. Please go ahead.
So, I'm just wondering if these proposals are for condos or rental? And if there's, if you have any idea about how much public benefits will be paid?
Thank you. These are all for condo units. And the amount of density bonus contribution is at the end of the report, on the second to last page for each report.
Oh, okay.
It does vary by the site area.
Okay, thanks.
Could you give us a bit of a range on, just to save Counselor Swanson?
Yes. So, for one of them, it is $406,000. Oh, sorry, $308,000.
Or?
768 to 780 West 27th, for example.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that help you, Counselor Swanson?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else on the list, so we'll move to the public. We have no speakers signed up for this first rezoning on West 27th Avenue. So, I will call three times, and if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this, please come forward and let us know. This is for the rezoning on 768 to 780 West 27th Avenue. Going once, going twice. By the way, I have to call three times, so there we go. That's the third call. I don't see any speakers. Speakers list is now closed. As few or no public comments are received on this item after 5:00 PM today, we'll close the receipt of public comments and move to hear closing comments or ask questions. Does the applicant have any closing comments? You don't? Okay, thank you. Staff have any closing comments?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Council have any questions? Just put yourself on the list. Don't see any. So, could somebody move? Thank you, Counselor Kirby Young. So, we have a mover for the recommendation, seconder on that. Thank you, Counselor Dominado. Is there any debate? I don't see anybody on the list, so we'll go ahead and vote. You should mark Counselor DeGenova's absent there. And Counselor Frye is out of the chamber. So, that has passed unanimously. Thanks very much. Moving on to the second zoning application on Columbia Street. Please go ahead, Clerk.
This is an application by Shape Architecture to rezone 5507-5521 Columbia Street from RS1 District to RM8A District to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. No correspondence was received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list.
Thanks very much. And we've received, well, an offer of a presentation, which we waived during the first item. So, we'll move on to the applicant. Is the applicant team here? Thank you very much. You'd like to speak to this or just be available for questions? Thank you very much. Are there any questions? So, just put yourself on the list, council, for the applicant or staff. I don't see any. Okay, so we'll move on to hearing from the public. There's nobody on the list, but I'll call three times if anybody would like to speak to this. 5507 to 5521 Columbia Street. Going twice, three times. Okay, thanks very much. So, there's no speakers. We're closing the list now, and we can move on to closing comments or other questions. Does the applicant have any closing questions or comments? Sorry. No, thanks very much. Staff have any?
No, sir.
Thank you. Council. Thanks very much. Just need a mover. Counselor Carr, thank you. Counselor Boyle, seconded. Any debate on this? Nope. Okay, so we can move to a vote. Waiting for Counselor Dominado. Just waiting, Counselor Dominado, just waiting for your vote. Thank you very much, and that's passed unanimously. Great. We'll move on to the third rezoning, which is 6538 to 6568 Oak Street.
This is a, this is an application by Fujair Architect to rezone 6538-6568 Oak Street from RS1 District to RM8AN District to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. No correspondence was received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list.
Thanks very much. And is the applicant team here? Great. Would you like to speak to this or just answer questions? Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council to staff or the applicant? Please put yourself on the list if you'd like to speak. Counselor Kirby Young.
Hi, thank you. Just one question, and that just relates to, I know the FSR is 1.2, and it says townhouses of up to three stories typically, but how many units is equate to?
So, the units will be determined actually at the development permit stage. At this stage, there's no form of development under rezoning. This will go through a development permit stage, and it's preliminary at this point.
Okay. So, is it premature or are you able to provide a guideline of, or frame of reference?
Some applicants do provide preliminary drawings, but they're not finalized at the rezoning stage for this particular process.
Okay. Sure, my question is, it's helpful as we do, because we get that for rental when it's council approving units, to know how many units we're actually putting into supply. So, that was, that was my question.
Right. Can just maybe ask, in this case, I do believe the applicant might be able to answer that question. They probably already have drawings.
This is the right time to ask, so would you like to ask the applicant?
Yes, please.
Great, okay. Give us an idea of the number of units, that would be great.
We don't know the exact amount, but it's varying somewhere between 18 and 22. We have different thoughts on it, and we haven't spoken to planning yet.
Okay, that's helpful. I was just looking for a frame of reference, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Okay, so that's it for questions. Now, we'll hear from the public. Let me just look here, and we have nobody listed to speak officially, but if you would like to speak to this application, now's the time to do so. Going twice, second call, third call. Thanks very much. So, there's no speakers. We're going to close the list and move on. Do the applicants have any closing comments? Staff?
No, sir.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Don't see any, so I can have a mover. Thank you, Counselor Weeb, seconder. Anybody? Thank you, Counselor Carr. And any debate? Don't see anybody on the list, so we'll move to the vote. Great. And that's, oh, Counselor Dominado just waiting for vote. Great, so that's unanimous as well. Thank you very much. Move on to application number four on 692 West 29th Avenue.
This is an application by Paramax Homes to rezone 692 West 29th Avenue from RS1 District to RM8A District to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. No correspondence was received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list.
Great, thank you very much. And is the applicant team here? Great. And would you like to speak to this or just answer questions? Thank you very much. Any questions from council to staff or the applicant? And I can just check the, don't see anybody on the queue. Give you a second. Okay, so I'm going to move on to hearing from the public. Don't have anybody on the list. Is there anybody in the audience, in the, in chambers that would like to speak to this? Oh, there's John Richards. Hey, John. Don't want to speak to it, I'm sure, but going once, going twice, going three times. Okay. So, we will close the list now, since there's no speakers, and move on to the applicant. Would you like to have any closing comments? Okay, thanks very much. Staff?
No, sir.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Nope. Okay, so I need a mover for the, anybody want to move this one? Thank you, Counselor Carr, seconder. Counselor Boyle, thanks very much. Any debate? Nope. Okay, we'll go to the vote, then. Great, that's passed unanimously. Thank you very much. On to the last of the first five, which is 668-692 West 54th.
This is an application by Amber Oasis West 54th Avenue Limited Partnership to rezone 668-692 West 54th Avenue from RS1 District to RM8A District to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. One piece of correspondence and support was received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list and receipt of public comments.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant team here? Right, hi, did you want to present or just answer questions? Thank you very much. Council want to ask questions to staff or the applicant? Counselor Weeb.
Yes, Schedule A shows a map of the development, but it doesn't have any of the properties to the south of the map. So, I'm just wondering why the map is incomplete.
Let's just pull up the relevant page from the plan. Leave a maybe park. But it would be labeled.
Oh. It's, to the south of the site is Langer Gardens, is a CD1 development. So, so it didn't, the, yeah, the map doesn't show the building footprint, so.
Currently, there's a roundabout, there's streets. I mean, normally, we want to get the context of some of these developments, and so this one's interesting to me because it's an incomplete map, so if you have neighbors in the area, they might not see the context of it. So, just to bring it forward maybe in the future so that you can see the neighboring properties.
Yeah, Julie noted.
Need a map before you make your decision, Counselor Weeb?
No, no, there's maps, it's just moving forward, we should have our maps completed.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. So, that looks like it from questions to staff, the applicant. We'll hear from the public now, and again, no speakers on the official list. Anybody from the audience like to speak to this from the, from the public? Going twice and three times. Okay, thanks. So, there's no speakers. The list is now closed, and we'll move to the applicant. Any closing comments? Nope. Okay, thanks very much. Staff?
No, sir.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff? Don't see any. Okay, so we need a mover. Counselor Boyle, thank you. Counselor Dominado, second. And is there any debate? None, we can go for the vote. Counselor Carr. Great, that's unanimous as well. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're, we've made it through the first five, which are really all based on the same presentation, but now we're moving to 1535 to 1557 Grant Street. And we'll have the clerk read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Stuart Howard Architects Incorporated to rezone 1535-1557 Grant Street from RM4 District to CD1 District to permit the development of a five-story residential building with 35 rental housing units. A height of 17.3 meters and an FSR of 2.19 are proposed. The following correspondence was received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list and receipt of public comments. Sixty-four pieces of correspondence and support and 62 pieces of correspondence and opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thanks so much. And let's see, we have Karen Wong from the Rezoning Centre to present, and we have a lot of speakers here, so perhaps we'll proceed with the presentation. Once we get it plugged in for you.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, just a moment. Okay, so good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Karen Wong, rezoning planner. Tonight, I'll be presenting an application at 1535-1557 Grant Street. This rezoning is being considered under the Grandview Woodland Community Plan. The subject sites consist of four lots and are located mid-block on the north side of Grant Street between Woodland Drive and Cotton Drive. The Grandview Woodland Community Plan is designed to shape growth and change over the next 30 years. The plan proposes distributed growth across the seven sub-areas. To ensure a diverse housing stock, the plan anticipates additional rental housing primarily in Cedar Cove, parts of Commercial Broadway Station Precinct, and Britannia Woodland, the sub-area where this site is located. The plan was approved by council in July 2016 after more than four years of public process. It represents one of the most significant neighborhood-scale engagement processes ever undertaken in the city. The subject sites are situated in Britannia Woodland Residential Core Sub-Area. Policies for this area support the gradual introduction of new secured rental housing. The plan allows for the consideration of developments up to six stories in height for 100% secured rental and up to 2.4 FSR through rezoning. The surrounding sites to the north, west, and east consist of detached homes predominantly zoned RM4, a medium-density residential zone that allows for a variety of dwelling types, including apartments. There are also a number of multiple-family dwellings in the surrounding neighborhood. The neighborhood is well-served with local amenities and services at Commercial Drive, which is one block east of the subject sites. Four detached homes on-site were constructed prior to 1940. During the community plan development stage, all homes within the plan area were assessed for heritage value. The subject homes are not identified in the plan as heritage sites, historic places of interest, nor as character street scape clusters. The applicant is proposing to rezone the site from RM4 to CD1 to permit a five-story residential building with 35 rental units. The proposal provides 54% family housing units, which exceeds the 35 family housing requirement. In terms of height, the base RM4 zone allows for four stories. The plan allows for up to six stories with a provision of rental, and this project proposes five stories, one story below the plan. A pre-application open house was held in November 2017 and attended by 63 people. A city-hosted open house was held in September 2018 and attended by 91 people with 83 responses received. Public responses from both the pre-application and the city-led open house identified similar themes, issues, and comments. Feedback included support for this height and density at this location given the proximity to transit, new rental dwelling, neighborhood fit, and building design. Concerns were also expressed about height, density, and shadow impacts, the building not being compatible with neighborhood character, and rental affordability. I'll address each of these concerns in the next slides. The project has undergone three iterations to respond to public and urban design panel feedback. To address height concerns, the application was reduced by one story from six to five stories in the final design. Site also has significant 17-foot crossfall to the north- Site also has significant 17-foot crosswalk to the northwest corner. Given the steep slope of the site and to align with the slope, the fifth story is set back 16 feet from the building face for additional buffer. In terms of density, the Grandview Woodland Plan allows for up to 2.4 FSR at the site. In response to density concerns, the density was reduced from the original 2.25 FSR to the current proposal at 2.19 FSR. That's below the maximum permitted in the plan by 2,700 square feet. Three units were removed, reducing the unit count from 38 to 35. As a result, six one-bedrooms were removed and redistributed as three additional family units, or two bedrooms. To respond to concerns of building fit, the building height was lowered by 7.9 feet. The street wall now aligns with the base zone height at four stories. And conditions are provided in Appendix B to refine the massing to better reflect a fine-grained residential scale and minimize bulk and impacts to neighboring properties. A shadow study was provided by the applicant for different building options on the site. The blue shows four stories permitted in the existing RM4 zone. The green shows five stories per the current rezoning. And red is six stories permitted in the Grandview Woodland Plan. This image shows March and September at 10:00 AM, which has the longest anticipated shadows. The applicant provided a comprehensive study for March and September on the left and June on the right at 10:00 AM, 12:00 PM, and 2:00 PM, which is standard testing for sun shadow impact. It demonstrates that shadowing has been minimized for this project as shadowing is similar for the four, five, and six-story scenarios. In terms of affordability, the proposal meets the maximum average rental rates and unit sizes and is identified within the rental housing, rental incentive guidelines. Sorry about that. The applicant has requested and qualifies for a development cost levy, or DCL waiver. This table compares the current DCL average rental rates for the east side of Vancouver and the proposed average rents for this project. The proposed average rent, unit rent in the third column is 30% of the household income ranges listed in the last column. To manage the demolition of existing rental housing in Grandview Woodland and the displacement of existing renters, the pace-of-change policy limits the redevelopment of existing rental housing to no more than five developments between 2016 to 2019 or a maximum of 150 existing market rental units. Staff will be reporting back to council late 2019 to 2020 on the pace of change. Three applications have been approved to date under the pace of change, and this rezoning application is a fourth of the allowable five. If approved, the seven existing rental units would be replaced with 28 net new rental housing. This application aligns with recently approved amendments for the Tenant Relocation and Protection Policy, or TRP, which now includes existing secondary rental. Currently, there are seven tenanted units within the existing four homes. Out of the seven tenanted units, only two units qualify for the TRP. All tenants have been notified of the rezoning application, and rents across all seven of the units are higher than the local area average units in East Hastings. In fall 2018, the city vacancy rate was 0.8%. That means eight out of every 1,000 market rental units were empty and available for rent. Grandview Woodland neighborhood has an even lower vacancy rate at 0.4%. Staff have worked with the applicant to produce a draft TRP as outlined in the yellow memo in front of you. The draft TRP meets new requirements and exceeds the minimum requirements in two instances: increased moving expenses for two eligible tenants and extending first right of refusal to include all seven existing tenants. However, the 20% right of first refusal discount is only offered to the two eligible TRP tenants. In summary, this proposal aligns with the Grandview Woodland Community Plan and would provide 35 new rental housing units within Britannia Woodland. Therefore, staff recommend that the application be approved, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So is the applicant team here? Great. And did you wish to speak to this? Okay, great. Just to remind counsel that this is the, uh, this is the portion where if you're going to ask questions to the applicant, this is when you do it. After the presentation, of course.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and councilors. My name is Gavin MacLeod, and I'm the Development Manager for our group. We've been building and improving properties in Vancouver, mostly east Vancouver, for the past 15 years. With optimism, we look forward to planning and developing purpose-built rental options as our communities grow in this direction. I would like to thank the entire applicant team for the hard work undertaken, from the time our inquiry was submitted at the end of 2016 to the rezoning application submission in May of 2018 to standing here today, almost three years since we started. Although the planning process and rezoning application process has taken considerably longer than originally projected, we recognize that this is a unique property within a unique neighborhood, which required more time and reworked design in response to community, city staff, and urban design panel feedback. We thank everyone who has engaged in this process, which has been key for us to be able to present a proposal which we believe now fits within this neighborhood. I would like to thank all of the tenants, past and present, who have lived in the existing houses. All tenants in the existing houses are new to the houses since we proceeded with our process. The condition of the exterior and interiors are not great, given the pre-1940s construction, which is now performing in a substandard way. We also realize the possibility of future development on the horizon does not provide long-term security for these tenants. However, as part of our plan to assist, we will be offering the current tenants an option for rental homes in the proposed new building. I would like to thank the city planning staff, who have been excellent at staying fully committed to working with us during extremely busy, deadline-laden times to ensure all aspects brought forward throughout the process have been fully considered and addressed. They have been outstanding to work with. It is from this collaborative effort that we are here tonight in the rezoning process, with the possibility of bringing 35 rental homes, as supported by the Grandview Woodland Community Plan and more specifically, in the core residential area within the plan, called Britannia Woodland, supporting up to six stories of secured rental housing. This Britannia Woodland neighborhood runs north-south along an elevated ridge bordered by Commercial Drive to the east and the light industrial zone along Clark to the west. The site is a five-minute walk, just two blocks, from the Britannia Community Center, elementary, and secondary schools. Children who live here can walk to school without having to cross a major street. Also, the residents will only have a 15-minute walk to the Commercial Broadway public transit hub, a 10- to 15-minute bike ride to Vancouver Community College and the South Creek Flats, and a 20-minute bike to downtown. Fittingly, our proposal will have 62 secured bike lockers. We believe this is an ideal location to add new housing for residents to work and attend the schools nearby. Our proposal is family-oriented, consisting of three-bedroom townhomes on two levels, all with front-door, walk-up, street, or garden access. A backyard children's play area and an upper-floor common room with a connected outdoor deck space will also be accessible. This building will provide community life and activity as it becomes a natural fit within the neighborhood. This proposal will provide true neighborhood rental housing in what could be a groundbreaking project for the city of Vancouver, as these new rental homes will not be located on busy arterial roads, as has been the case for almost 90% of rental built in Vancouver in the last 10 years. With projects like this one, we can take a significant step towards creating renter equity and a much-needed form of inclusive housing for years to come. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Do you want to go ahead? Go ahead.
Yeah, please. Oh, sorry.
Presentation?
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, again, your worship and council. My name is Neil Robertson. I'm the project architect for this project. As my client mentioned, we've been working on this project with our client, with city staff, and in consultation with the neighborhood for almost three years now. As staff mentioned, the lot is located one and a half blocks west of Commercial Drive. It has been zoned RM4 since the 1970s. And it's my understanding from my discussions with city staff that this neighborhood has been zoned for multifamily since the 1930s. The RM4 zone supports approval for up to 1.45 FSR and four stories. You can see on the map here, highlighted in red, all the multifamily projects in the neighborhood created under the existing zone, many within one block of our project. A large number of these projects are strata-titled. And actually, that was where we started with this project. My client purchased these lots looking to develop a strata-titled apartment building under the existing RM4 zone. It should be noted that a large number of these developments in the neighborhood existing are at the maximum relaxable 1.45 FSR under the current zone and range from three and a half stories to what appears to be, right here, five stories for the development half a block west of us on Grant Street. These projects were, as I said, all developed under the existing RM4 zone. Shortly after making our inquiry into the planning department for a strata-titled project, the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan was adopted by council, and we became aware of the possibility of rezoning for a secured rental project. After some schematic analysis, we set aside the strata schemes and we began designing a rental project to the new design constraints delineated in the community plan. We've engaged in a robust community consultation process, inclusive of two, uh, inclusive of two open houses, two appearances at the Urban Design Panel, meetings with concerned neighbors in my office, as well as mail-out and door knocking campaigns. All of these efforts were to help give the design team guidance in a mindful design refinement. I'm pleased to say that these efforts have been quite fruitful in shaping our project. You can see here... I'll get back to that one. One of the major concerns that we heard from, from neighbors to the north was the shading and overlook concerns. Staff already presented our image here, but I'll just sort of run through it a little bit again. So to this end, we engaged in a very thorough shading analysis study through our design refinement. Here's the composite diagram showing the three paths. The blue indicates, as staff mentioned, the building outline and shading for a four-story building under the current RM4 zone. And you can also see at the top right there the footprints slightly different under the current zone relative to what we've proposed. The red indicates the shadow path with our previous six-story scheme, and the green indicates the current scheme. As you can see, there have been some modest improvements relative to the previous six-story scheme, especially at the equinox. Drawing's on this side right here. Especially at the equinox. Pardon me. But what was most interesting to us was the similarity between the shadow paths compared to what is currently permitted under the RM4 zone. This is largely due to the fact that the current proposal proposes significantly more rear yard setback than what is currently permitted under the RM4 zone. Additionally, and related to overlook concerns, is the presence of several mature trees on the north side of our project. These guys right there. This is a tree shading analysis, which has eliminated the shadows generated from our proposal, focusing on the shading generated by the trees alone. As you can see in our study, the neighborhood is well-populated with mature trees. Along the north side of our project, there are three mature trees, which we have worked quite hard to incorporate into our proposal. These trees provide significant shade to the lots to the north. I would argue, more than our project, but have a great benefit of also providing a verdant, soft visual barrier between our project and those properties. Another concern that we heard related to scale was related to scale and massing of our project. Before you hear is the previous six-story scheme as well as the current five-story scheme presented together. I think it's a little better to see them together. The biggest and obvious change is the elimination of the sixth floor. This has undoubtedly reduced the apparent massing of the project as perceived from the street. To further improve the project, we designed the facade in terms of material and rhythm to something more in keeping with the townhouse or single-family scales of the neighborhood. So as you move along the street, the impression is a collection of three- and four-story townhouses rather than a large monolithic building mass. You can see here the rhythm that we're creating along the facade here. Here's a slide of, uh, of some views of the key design evolutions from the same street vantage point. This is our rezoning application, inquiry application on the top left here. The one to the top right is, is the first urban design panel presentation. The one on the bottom left is the, our second urban design presentation. And finally, on the bottom right is our current proposal. There have been innumerable changes, but some of the key changes are: we've pushed the building down into the ground as much as is permitted by engineering services for parking access. We've reduced the floor-to-floor heights. We've increased the rear yard setback by 10 feet to accommodate a future lane allowance. And we have set back the top floor to reduce the apparent massing as perceived from the street. This is undoubtedly a challenging lot to develop a multifamily project on. The lots are sloped and shallower than typical in the city. And I think that that is reflected in the development statistics. As staff mentioned, where the community plan envisions a six-story typology, we are proposing a four-story typology. Where the plan envisions a density of 2.4 FSR, we are coming forward with a 2.19 FSR density. We've heard some concerns in regards to the shallower lot issue. I would like to point your attention to this, to our site section up on the screen right now, showing our relationship to the adjacent lots to the north. Here you see the rear property line. And here's the 10-foot lane dedication. It's part of our rezoning. And here's the current zoning setback requirement. As you can see, our building is significantly more setback than is required under the current zone and completely complies with the, with the community plan setback requirements, plus a 10, 10-foot lane dedication. So although our project is closer to the neighboring buildings than is typical, it's not because our, because of our project's rear yard setbacks. It's because the properties to the north are massed closer to their property lines than is typical. However, what are, what are challenges for the project's bottom line have been opportunities for the design of the building. Because of the shallower lot depth has necessitated our compressing the building depth, it has opened up the opportunity for lower-level townhouse, townhouse typologies to be incorporated into the project. The two lower fours of the entire project is a two-level, mostly three-bedroom, family-oriented townhouse. This is a rental development form that is severely lacking citywide. So really, what we have with this project is a three-level rental apartment building stacked on top of a two-level rental townhouse building, which I believe is the first of this, this kind in the neighborhood. Larger-than-typical rear yard setback in concert with mature rear yard trees has afforded us the space and environment to create what we believe will be a wonderful at-grade children's play area. The lot sloping off to the north while creating a shadowing challenge simultaneously creates amazing views of the city for the majority of the residents. We have therefore concentrated our upper family units on the western side of the project to provide families with the best views in the house. Additionally, we've located our common and amenity room and rooftop deck on the western side of the building. You can see right here. Also right there. On the west side of the deck to take advantage of these views, amazing views of the city. New family rentals in the, in a family-oriented neighborhood add to a community. By creating 35 new rental units, more than half of which are family units, we can help we can help ensure that these four single-family lots can provide attainable, livable family rental supply for sixty years more. And I hope that you agree, and you will vote to support our proposal. Thank you.
Thanks very much, your presentation. I do have a number of councillors on the list to ask questions. And again, at this point, it's to staff and the applicant, and this is the only chance to ask applicant questions. I have councillor Hardwick. Please go ahead, up to five minutes.
So I understand the process started in 2016, and correct me if I'm wrong in any of the assumptions. Originally, this had started as a proposal for three duplexes with the retention of a fourth house that had the most heritage value on the street.
No, that's incorrect. We actually came forward with a multifamily condo apartment building. At the time, my client only had three of the four lots, and one of them was deemed to have character merit prior to the adoption of the plan. And at that time, the staff felt that the best typology was to do high-density duplexes. So we reapplied with a duplex scheme at that time.
Yeah, I'll add to that briefly. This was our due diligence process, if you will, started in early 2016, prior to the adoption of the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan.
I see. And then it moved to a six-story rental building with the support of staff in light of the newly-approved Grandview Woodlands plan.
Correct.
That's accurate? Then you went to Urban Design Panel, and it was rejected there, from my notes, anyway, that there was a disconnect and a lack of fit with the immediate neighborhood. And then you went back, and I think the biggest concern that was related to me was that it was mid-block instead of end of the block. Is that accurate?
Yes, I wouldn't say it was rejected. It failed to reach the threshold of approval. So I say that because rejected gives the impression that the Urban Design Panel voted unanimously against it. It was four to three against. And then when we went back, two of the...
Okay, so let me walk in through the steps. Then it came back to UDP in late 2018.
Correct.
And with some modifications, including a step up at the west end of the building.
Correct.
And again, the UDP rejected the proposal as being too much of a departure from the prevailing development in the neighborhood.
And I would also like to point out to councillor Hardwick that two of the members of the UDP that voted in favor of the project at the first UDP meeting were not in attendance that day, and once again, it was a four-three decision.
With the chair also favoring it.
With the chair favoring it but not being...
I hate to tell you this, but four to three, it's still, that's still the way it plays out. So then it was, the proposal was revised to a five-story version.
Correct.
And eliminating the two-story step, which you previously described, and having one less floor, which is about 360 square feet smaller, which, is that still accurate?
Sounds correct, yes.
Okay. So I'm just trying to synopsize the feedback that I've been receiving, and I'm mindful of my time. So in your view, you have addressed the community's concerns in the redesign of the building. Has it gone, or was it required to go for a third time to the Urban Design Panel?
No, it was not required to. When we met with staff, we felt that, we heard loud and clear, a lot of the comments that UDP had made, and that the very considerable changes were sufficient to address the UDP concerns, I believe.
Susan Changivell, my honour. If I could step in and answer that question. Subsequent to the second Urban Design Panel, there had, the panel noted that the initial recommendation from the first review had been addressed, and there were no additional recommendations to review. However, contextual fit was still a concern. After the second review, the project was revised, and staff felt that the third submission with the reduced height and density did not require a third review. However, we will seek another review at the development permit stage and seek specifically advice from the Urban Design Panel to address neighborhood fit. Additionally, there are five conditions as part of this rezoning applications, applications seeking improvement for neighborhood fit and compatibility, and four conditions to minimize impacts to adjacent properties.
Is there anything in there about slope?
To address the site slope, I think the fact that the building has been lowered a full story does address many of the impacts to the slope. I know that we have heard back a perception of this building being eight stories, and I'm not understanding that. The overall height is 56.7 feet to the top of parapet. I think if this were an eight-story building, you'd be looking at about an 86-foot height. To be fair, given the slope site condition, probably at the lowest elevation, it will appear six-story, given significant slopes. At the same time, at the highest point of the site, we're looking at a four-and-a-half-story perception.
Great, thanks for the five minutes.
Thank you.
Put yourself back on the list, of course, councillor Hardwick, if you like. Councillor Swanson, please.
Yeah, thank you. So you guys have agreed that you'll give first right of refusal with a 20% discount to two of the seven tenants?
Correct.
So last night, we had another rezoning of a building where a 43-unit apartment was being demovicted, basically. And the proponent voluntarily agreed to give all 43 of those tenants a 40% discount on the first right of refusal. I'm really interested in affordability. I'm really interested in the fact that the low-income people in Grandview have been pushed out. It used to be over 40%, and now it's less than 20 in just 30 years. And I'm wondering if, on a voluntary basis, like the landlord we had last night, you guys would go to 40% for the seven tenants who are displaced, or seven other tenants, if those ones don't want to go back?
I completely understand where yourself and the affordability question is coming from in this city. And the short answer is yes, we would consider that. Right now, at this stage, in order to prove feasibility for a project like this, it is a risk. Right now, we are already capping rents in the first year under the rental incentives program. So discounts would be obviously off that existing below-market rate for new rental product. So while, as the developer, we would definitely be open to explore that, we haven't been able to pencil in that percentage beyond the 20% that is being offered to the tenants that have been there at least a year before we applied for the rezoning.
So for me, it'd be really important to be able to get you guys to sign a voluntary housing agreement to the 40%, rather than just say that you'll consider it.
Unfortunately, there is a risk, this is, there is a risk of the project being infeasible.
Thank you.
Thanks councillor Swanson. Point of information, councillor Dejanova.
Thanks very much. I probably should have started with the point of privilege, letting you know that although I was on my way here, I was listening.
Okay.
So I'm up to date.
Great.
Also, just wanted, for the point of information, do we have to base it on the policy report that's in front of us, or can we compare this to another public hearing and what another applicant did? I'm just wondering.
I'm not sure. Perhaps I can ask the city manager about how the proceedings of just last night would affect questions we can ask here.
Thanks. And staff, let me know if I stray here. The applicant is expected to meet the policies that are pertinent for this particular neighborhood, for the Grandview plan, and for this particular site. That is what they're expected to meet, including any TRP expectations, tenant protection. So that's what we would be judging this report against and the application against, and what we would be reporting back to you is that they're complying with. However, the councillor can still ask them questions about their willingness to deepen affordability, and that's not out of order to ask, but we, as staff, would be bringing forward and expecting them to meet the policies for this particular site in this neighborhood. Hope that answers the question.
Okay.
Yeah, just a follow-up, but we couldn't have an expectation of an applicant to do exactly the same thing as another applicant.
I guess it was a question about voluntary change.
Yep. I just wanted that part specifically asked. We'd have to base our expectations on...
On the policy.
On our policy.
Current policy.
Thank you very much.
No problem. On councillor Dominado, then.
Thanks, Mr. R. A couple of questions. I wanted to just follow up, just to confirm, it's probably for our staff, this is with the current zoning, the applicant could simply be doing a STRATA build if they wanted to at this time?
Yes. RM4 allows multiple dwelling to a four-stories STRATA.
Okay, thank you. And I wanted to ask around, one of the concerns I know that has been raised through Councillor Swanson, others, is around congestion in that area, and whether there's any kind of traffic study that's been undertaken?
Rosemary Drazkovich for the Transportation Branch of the city. The application did not submit their own traffic study for the site, however, staff have reviewed the application. The development was reviewed by Transportation's Traffic and Data Management Branch, who reviewed for operations and safety, and no concerns were identified at that time. The site is also in close proximity to frequent transit and cycling infrastructure, and given the use and scale of the development, the staff do not anticipate any meaningful impacts to the existing roadway network near the site.
Okay, thank you. A question sort of tied to that is just looking at the parking provisions. I know there's one space for car share. I'm just wondering if there's any consideration given to having more than one space for car share, just given what we're seeing, a proliferation of use of car share in the city?
From the city perspective, there's no requirement for them to provide more than the one car share. They are meeting the provisions of the parking bylaw, so I will maybe defer to the applicant to respond if they have any intention to provide any more car share or not on their site.
Okay.
I would just like to point out also that since we're removing three driveways from the street, we are actually additionally adding three street parking spaces. I just wanted to point that out as well. But car share, I'll defer to my client.
I think we would definitely be open to additional car share. We definitely feel it's a good thing for the city, and it's obviously achieved a lot of success. I would probably defer to the architect, though, because technically, I believe the way it works is the car share will be available to all public in the area and accessible by just walking down the ramp, and the parking spot will be at the bottom of the ramp, which then is before you would reach the secured parking for the tenants. So if we were to add another one, perhaps it would be a designated spot on the street out front, but within the site, I don't know if it would work.
There are turning radius concerns regard to that, besides security concerns. I think those could be dealt with. You know, anything can be dealt with, I think.
Okay. Couple more questions for both of you. I just wanted to follow up on your comment around the setback on the backside of the building. You mentioned, I think, ten feet for potentially a lane. Is that, and so can you just expand on that?
Yeah, I might defer to city staff on that one.
So in terms of the rear yard setback, this site is 99 foot deep, but it has the same rear yard setback as a 120-foot site. Plus, we are seeking a 10-foot lane dedication in addition to the required rear yard setback.
Okay. Thank you. And also, just around the, you had mentioned in your presentation around, there's the 35 units, but you mentioned sort of two-level townhouse style. How many of those are there that are?
There's eight...
I assume they're all ground entry, the town level?
Eight three-bedrooms, 16 one-bedrooms, 11 two-bedrooms, eight three-bedrooms.
Okay.
So eight would be on that ground floor. I believe it's four in the front and four in the rear.
Four, okay. That's what I was trying to get at. Okay, thank you. And I have another question here, so just bear with me. This is actually a question for our staff going just back, sorry for flipping around a bit, but to the Urban Design Panel. I was just trying to understand is that, because questions were posed about, there was a requirement for a resubmission, and then, again, the panel recommended a resubmission, but there was no recommendations made at that time. I'm trying to understand what the rationale would be for seeking a resubmission but not making any recommendations to give any guidance. So I'm just trying to understand why that would be, why would the panel make that recommendation but not have any suggestions for improvement or changes?
I can't speak on behalf of the panel. I think there was some discomfort about the contextual fit. However, there were no additional recommendations.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. Appreciate you can't speak on our behalf. And then, just to be clear, I also understood from one of the visuals, there is that just east of the proposed development, going closer to Commercial, if I'm correct, there is a STRATA build of about four or five stories, mid-block, is that correct, on the same side?
Yeah, there's, yeah.
To the west.
Was it west?
The taller one. But I mean, if you look on the map we provided, there's lots.
Yeah, there's quite a few in the area, but there isn't that same on Grant Street. I believe there's another...
Yeah.
Building that is mid-block.
Yeah, correct.
Four or five stories, to my recollection.
Yes.
Okay. I'll pause there, thanks.
Excuse me?
Sure.
Hi, Mike.
Your manager?
There've been a couple of questions about the input from the Urban Design Panel, and so I guess I just wanted to elaborate, perhaps to make sure we're fully answering your question, councillor. The panel is intended to be advisory to the department, to the director of planning, really. And so they're not approving or not approving projects. They're really there, and their intention is to give input. And so I think in cases like this, they might give input, have feedback, and then the department of, the director of planning and staff would then go and look to integrate that feedback. And so oftentimes, they might have feedback, and they might not approve a project, but that wouldn't necessarily go back to the panel for their review again. It would be then integrated. And I think that's the kind of input that the director of planning and staff would then take into the final refinements of the actual project.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
Thanks very much. On to councillor Kerby Young.
Thank you. Happily, for a time councillor Dominado asked some of my clarifying questions, so I'll just whip through the other few. And I think some of these are for the applicant, based on the comments. So first off, you had mentioned that in terms of the reductions, the adjustments that had been made as you've sort of progressed through the process. One that you referenced was the reduced floor-to-floor heights, I guess to manage the overall height. Can you comment on what that does in terms of living space and the height of those units relative, you know, to livability or relative to other sort of common heights?
All of these units are generally quite livable. When I design a building, I typically, I appreciate high ceilings, so I generally design buildings with high ceilings. So the original iteration of this building, all the units had nine-foot ceilings. So, but, you know...
And how tall are they now?
Eight foot two or three.
Okay.
Standard apartment height, a little bit higher.
Okay, so very standard, all right. And then you had also mentioned the reduction density to 2.19, but you said the allowable amount was, and I just didn't catch that.
2.4.
2.4. Thanks. You gave us a lot of information quickly. The other comment was around the townhouse typologies, and I just wanted to understand, you talked a bit about sort of the stacked effect. Give that sort of effect more of the townhouse or single, more sort of scalable at sort of street level? Can you just expand on that a bit?
Yeah, so the reason, all of the ground-level units are directly accessible. They have an interior hallway at grade, so there's a normal entry into apartment building. But every single one of the ground-level units has their own front door on the street right there. So they have their own little walk-up terrace and their own front entry there. You don't typically see this in apartment buildings, just because of the depth of the buildings, don't really afford that. But because we've been, the shallow lot has really squished our building depth, it makes it quite feasible to do...
So just following up on that, then, so two-level townhouses within the three floors of
Yeah, so the bottom two levels are all townhouses.
Yep.
And then the three levels above that are all apartment flats.
Okay. But entrance to the townhouses on both sides, so you can enter from the rear of the townhouse into the main building?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And then the other question that I had had was related, and I don't know if the applicant wants to answer this or staff, but I was really intrigued by the comment that this would be one of the first, I can't remember the exact language, that would not be located on an arterial road, because typically that's where we see density coming in, and then there's always discussion around health benefits of that versus more in neighborhood. So is that a correct stat? Does anybody want to expand on that? Or is that a correct statement? It's one of the first?
I referred to it in my
Was it you?
Remarks, and I was comparing it to the, all of the purpose-built rental projects that have been brought before this council to date.
This council?
And then I referred to a, I referred to a stat that was part of the most recent report to council on the benefits of rental incentive programs. It stated that in the last 10 years, 90% of new rental housing has been on arterial roads.
Okay. Because we hear obviously a lot around potential, both sort of psychological noise and health benefits of locating everything on arterials. Okay. And how does that, for this site, then contextually in the neighborhood, how does that relate to the other? Because you had shown some other maps with other multifamily also on non-arterials? Just trying to go back to the, and just the maps in my head, there's some of those other buildings are also on non-arterials in this particular site context?
Which I think are great buildings as well. I don't want to take anything away from those buildings. This building in particular, with the townhouse, the townhouse base on a residential street, offering families the ability to live in a housing of this type is a bit more challenging than when it's based on an arterial road. I know some of the arterial roads, purpose-built rentals in the rear and off the lane, you're able to create this townhouse, but in this one, we're able to do it on the streetscape, which we think is a great value add.
Great, thank you. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Boyle.
Thanks, and most of my questions have been asked. So I'm just wondering if you can remind me, in the changes and reduction in height from the original, or how many units have been lost or what square footage?
I believe our original application was 45 units.
Okay.
Way, way back when we did our first rezoning inquiry application, and through all the pushing and pulling and cutting and squishing, we're down now to 35.
Down about 10. Okay. The rest of my questions were asked. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Counselor DeGenova.
Thank you. I was going to ask about the children's play space or play area. How many children would you say that could accommodate? And is that a private play space for children who are living in, would be living, may be living?
I'm not quite sure how to quantify how many kids you can put in a playground. I would think a fairly large number. I'm not sure if we have the landscape plan available there.
I do know this came from feedback from the Urban Design Panel to create this type of space. We thought with the, sort of the park-like setting in the rear yards, that corner area would be fantastic for it, so it could feel like a yard.
Thank you. I don't need metrics, but will it have like a little playground, a slide?
Yeah, there would be like
Okay. Some people consider children's play space grass, so I
Yeah, no, no. We've actually been working with the landscape architect to try to integrate the, one of the feedbacks we had from the neighborhood was they asked us to retain as many of the rear yard trees as we could. We actually wanted to retain two of them. Unfortunately, our arborists, despite our urgings, would not allow us to retain the oversized vine maple there, as it was diseased, and vine maples don't typically do very well when they get large. But there is a large fruit tree in the rear fig tree that we're, our landscape architects want to actually integrate into the children's play area as well.
Oh. Okay, that answers my question. Thank you. Another question that I have is about the lane access. So it's my understanding from staff's question, and I'm not sure if you'd like to answer this, or staff, that that wasn't a requirement necessarily of the policy. What I just heard was that that was almost a benefit, so it won't be exclusive to the proposed development if it moves forward. It instead would be for the entire neighborhood. Is that correct?
That lane dedication is a requirement of this application. It's a long-term aspiration.
Okay. And is it a requirement, or was it a requirement in similar applications that we see listed on, I believe it's page four? The significant developments in the immediate area.
Yes, for, it is a requirement. Staff are seeking the lane dedication as a requirement. Rosemary could answer that.
I just wondered if it's very typical to require this, and is this something, well, I know we require it, is it typical to see this needed? I suppose it would only be required if staff recommended that it was needed, depending on the location of the site?
Sure, yeah. So Rosemary Drazkovich for Transportation. The lane itself, as I understand, is not a policy requirement, but it is required to serve a long-term intent that the city has and engineering has to serve developments through a lane access. So on any development, not necessarily just this one, on long blocks for servicing needs when there is an opportunity identified to acquire lane dedications piecemeal, that is typically a requirement of the development as a condition of enactment. So it's intended to serve a long-term intent, and as the other developments come in, then a lane can be achieved through the site for the benefit of that whole kind of area.
Okay. And I see that it probably would, to clarify on the question asked by Counselor Dominado before, considering where it is, where the site's located on the block, it may also provide ease with the traffic plan, or it would have definitely influenced the traffic plan.
Yes, certainly. In locations where there is a lane, then developments are required to provide, or generally required to provide their access from the lane. But in this case, because there is no, like, it would be mid-block sort of one piece of lane, and there is no way in and out, the only option for this development to provide access to their site is from Grant Street, so
That is the answer I was, because I understand there's requirement for access, but requirement to build an actual lane or provide an actual lane with right-of-way, that's not always a requirement. There sometimes already is one there. Is that correct?
Yeah, when there is a lane, then we don't require more lane.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Carr and then Counselor Frye.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to go back to the first question that was asked you, to which is about whether or not you would be willing to consider a deeper discount for the current tenants in the area. I think I remember you saying that you were willing to consider it, and the language by Counselor was, you didn't agree with the particular language, but what do you mean by you'd be willing to consider it?
Well, I think the challenge as a developer of purpose-built rental, when you
If you could just move to the mic, that would be great. Thank you.
A challenge is when you agree to certain rents, you're agreeing to a fixed amount of revenue on a fully leased outside.
Right.
And we're at the rezoning process, and we've done our, we've done our cost analysis, we've done our quantitative survey, and the construction costs, of course, are not guaranteed to stay where they are.
Right.
And there's perceived risk of time and locking into rates, and there's financing risk and financial risk. So it ultimately becomes a calculated risk, I guess you could say, whether you get to the point where you're ready to construct and you've gone further down through the development permit process. And if you've committed to a certain level of discount for the rental income
Right.
That can be achieved, you could actually put a project into a position where it's not feasible.
Okay.
And that's the risk I was
Okay, so just correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is that it really isn't feasible for you to consider?
At this point, the way it's penciling out, we have acknowledged and we will be giving a 20% discount on the rates to the people that are eligible for the tenant relocation plan.
Right.
And we have not determined a percentage that would be possible for the other five tenants.
Right, okay.
But I would not rule out that possibility. It's just to commit to it right now could put the project at risk.
Is there, in your mind, a difference between committing to it versus committing to continue to consider as a project?
Oh. Yeah, definitely continue to consider.
Okay.
Something we've talked about
Okay.
At great lengths. It's something we want to be able to do.
Right, okay. I've got a couple of more questions.
Okay.
The height and the health of the mature trees, the three mature trees on the north side of the building. Can you, does the height of those trees and the, you know, the level of canopy actually mitigate all of the shadowing effects, or some of them, a portion of them?
Yeah, yeah, so I can answer that. And if, that was our, sort of our tree shadow analysis that we did there.
Yeah.
So I don't think anything completely blocks out our building. I think that would be a fallacy to claim that.
Right.
Nor does it block out any shading impacts whatsoever. But they certainly, I would say, shade more equal to what our building does.
To 50/50 or so.
Yeah, something like that.
Something like that. And the trees are in good health?
With the exception of the one large vine maple, when I met with all the neighbors from Kitchener in my office, they expressed the desire for us to try to retain the vine maple as much as possible.
Yeah.
I really pushed that arborist hard to try to keep that.
Yeah, yeah.
And he just wasn't going to go for it.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're not opposed to planting something to replace and
Right.
Something like that.
Okay, okay, that's great. I actually have some questions for staff, if that's okay. Thank you. So staff, how might language be framed? If the applicant is willing to consider, to continue to consider increasing the discount to returning current tenants, how could that be framed within the recommendations?
Allison Dunn, Senior Planner, Affordable Housing Programs, Arts, Culture and Community Services. There are a couple of different options that both applicant and council could consider about trying to craft a different amendment around the right of first refusal. I'll just provide council a little bit of background and reminder to the policy changes that were made in June to the tenant relocation policy. At that time when we brought back the changes, one of the key things that we shared with council was community feedback on the right of first refusal. As applicants have described, and we heard from others in the development community, the right of first refusal is a kind of significant unknown in a development project. So it can impact the ability to get lending and get financing, because we can't be certain of the number of tenants that will take that right of refusal up. So what they can show in terms of their long-term finances is somewhat unclear to them. What we found is that even with 100% of tenants offered a right of first refusal, typically we'll see return rates at around 25%, and you see that across the country and other jurisdictions where they offer a right of first refusal. People move, they set up their lives, they often aren't interested to break that down two years later and move somewhere else. What we also heard about right of first refusal from the community at large, tenants, was that of all the pieces in our tenant relocation plan, it was the least important to them in terms of ensuring that they had a safety net under them around displacement. They were interested in the compensation, they wanted, particularly low-income tenants were interested in that assurance that they would have something affordable to them immediately upon having to move out of that. So that's just some context around the right of first refusal for council in terms of what you can do. The applicant, we're in new territory, I guess I would say, and we would confer with legal about this, but last night we saw an applicant make a very clear declaration to council. Council then moved an amendment to the tenant relocation plan. The plan at rezoning is draft, so what's here today is something, it's a kind of minimum requirement. Staff continue to work with an applicant through the development permit to ensure that we know everything about what's going on with tenants on the site, and at times, that will mean greater compensation, greater supports based on what we learn. So the tenant relocation plan can get richer over time. So I would say either staff or council could entertain moving an amendment to the tenant relocation plan that's in the yellow memo that you have in front of you, or you could direct staff to continue to work with the applicant to deepen the affordability in the right of first refusal. I will note that what we shared with you today about the tenants on site, most of them are paying currently above-market rents for Grandview Woodland areas. We haven't identified any low-income tenants, and most of them have lived in the building for a very short period of time. So we think it's a positive that all of them are being offered the right of first refusal, but we haven't had an indication that a deeper discount is required for the tenants on this site in terms of supporting any low-income tenants. So in that way, I would say the displacement that's coming from this project is quite low, and we feel the tenant relocation plan does a good job with the current status of that building, the affordability there, supporting tenants.
Thank you.
Thanks, and we're on to Counselor Frye.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Robertson, you're a busy guy. I do like your work, actually, so
Thank you very much.
I don't get a chance to say that, but I
Yeah.
Mr. McLeod, did I catch you correctly when you were saying something about capping rents in the first year?
That is under the rental incentive program, so they will be matching the rents as prescribed for the rental incentive program.
So that's the targeted rents for the first year, but then after that?
Yeah, by the
Maybe it's a staff question then. Thanks.
So under the Rental 100 program, the starting rents at occupancy have to match what was committed to in the rezoning that you see tonight. They are able to apply an adjustment over the time of construction that is based on the residential tenancy annual increases. So if there was an increase of 2% next year while they're building, they could at occupancy apply that inflator to the new rents. So the new rents might look slightly different, they might have been adjusted through that time period. Staff review that before occupancy, and that has to be the starting rent. The starting rent must meet that rent. Should a unit turn over, then the owner is able to charge, under the Residential Tenancy Act, whatever rent they believe the market will bear.
Right, that's, okay, that's sort of what I thought. And so what would, if, you know, looking through the comparative under the RM4, it would be about 1,900 square feet and would deliver public benefits to the tune of 440,000 in DCLs, as opposed to what we're looking at now, which is, I think, about 2,900 square feet and foregoing about 660,000 in DCLs. What's the comparative difference? I know we're talking about this project, but for comparison, what would it have looked like under RM4?
It's just a factor of FSR, oh, sorry. I believe it's just a factor of the DCL related to the FSR, correct?
Well, the DCLs waived for the rental.
Right.
So under RM4, conceivably, it could have been, I guess, still rentals or condos or what have you.
Or condos you could rent or
Yeah.
So, sorry, the question?
I'm just curious, what's the difference in what that would have looked like? Maybe that's a bit too theoretical a question.
Yenzeng, Senior Rezoning Planner. So if you're looking at Appendix G of the report
Okay, I am.
And I think that's where you're looking at. I think if this were to build under the RM4, we're looking at a DCL and then citywide DCL and citywide utility DCL, about 439,000. I will know that they will have to do seven replacement units and, you know, just, you know, paying DCL as well. So that seems to be the difference, right? Because if they're building under RM4, there will be no CAC.
And, sorry?
There will be no CAC, right?
Right, but there's no CAC now.
Yeah, there's no CAC right now, yeah.
Right, so there's no CAC, no DCL versus a DCL under their RM4. Okay, that's
Counselor Frye, I might, I could add something, too.
Please, Mr. McLeod.
It's definitely, it's not an easy decision as a developer, whether, you know, you pursue all market rent units and pay the DCL, or you agree to a level of rent that is conceivably below market rent prior to fully developing out and having your construction plan. We felt that the increased affordability from the program as a driver felt that the increased affordability from the program, as a driver, tipped the scales for us. The DCL waivers are helpful. In this case, we're providing a green roof on the building, which is not a requirement, which helps with rain-water management. This will be under the rezoning policy for passive house or passive house equivalent. These are all costs that definitely add to the bottom line. So we felt that we could provide a better building for the tenants and also reduce the opening rents that we perceive are below what new purpose-built rental at market would be.
I appreciate that clarification, and I'll just add my own two bits worth. I'm looking future-wise, DCLs, the renewal of nearby Britannia, which is kind of falling apart and is going to require a pretty significant amount of public investment and that kind of thing. So, but I really appreciate you adding that layer of context. And I do just want to highlight one, there's a significant addition of trees.
We're just at the five minutes. So you can put yourself back on the list after.
Okay.
Great, thanks very much. Counselor DeGenova?
Thanks. Questions, right?
Questions to applicant or staff?
Thank you. I do have a question. I was just wondering if you knew about the SHORT program at the City of Vancouver?
No, no, I'm.
Okay, so the social housing or rental tenure program, you weren't aware of?
No, I was not, no.
Okay, and I'm not sure if you would have been eligible for it, but, I mean, roughly, can you tell me how many weeks it's taken you to get to this rezoning?
Three years.
Three years.
From application.
From application.
Sixteen months, and then inquiry is 32 months.
So from inquiry to today?
Thirty-two months.
Thirty-two months. So if you came through in 28 weeks, which is what the SHORT program would have allowed you to do, although it wasn't around three years ago, perhaps your pro forma costs would be different than they are? Is that correct?
Perhaps, yeah. I mean, as we said, these are tough, these are very difficult laws to build on. So I think that all the time has not been optimal. It's been time well-spent to try to bring forward a good proposal that compromised for a lot of people.
And I understand it's just a pilot right now. Yeah, thank you.
Karen Harris, Assistant Director of Planning. The SHORT program at this point is only for social housing projects. So there's an eligibility criteria that the SHORT projects have to meet, and projects that don't provide social housing aren't able to sort of rise to the top of the list at this point.
Okay, I thought it was also rental tenure, that's what it says on the website, but I understand it's a pilot?
It's a pilot for only 20, we only have 20 pilot projects at one time, and because we have quite a significant number of social housing projects.
No, I do understand that. Maybe we can clarify that afterwards because the website, maybe the website then needs to be updated. Maybe there's, yeah, well, we can figure that out after. What I was going, what I was trying to ask the applicant was, the pro forma is a working document, is that correct? Like, it's an ongoing working document. I was just looking at one today, not for anything in this municipality, but.
It's a projection.
Exactly. So really, depending on what happens today, if things were to move forward for you, your costs could increase depending on how long it took you to get to DP, what the expectations were. So you have kind of calculated that, I would assume, into the 20% that we, into the policy, and you wouldn't be sure as to what else you could offer unless you knew what all of those costs, unless you knew that those costs would meet the targets along the way. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just, I was, I'm wondering, just in looking at this project, and another counselor brought up some really good questions, but I think that just in considering that, maybe there's something else later on, that's a policy thing. But now I'm wondering, I'm looking at the policy right now and why we have it at 20% and why we can't expect more. I mean, we can ask, but we can't expect more, and I could see why it would be hard to give more without knowing how much it's going to cost. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And it looks like all the questions from counselors to the, and again, just a reminder, this is your last chance to ask applicant, the applicant questions, so if you have any additional ones, please put your name on the list. Otherwise, we'll move to the public segment of the process. So we have 27 folks on the list, and the first three, we have Stephen Boas, David Holloway, and Matthew McLean, and, sure, will the clerk can assist you with the?
I already sent it in.
Okay, the clerk, do you have that?
Otherwise, I do have it on a USB stick, so we can grab it from there.
And I'll just wait till it's up and.
Can you put it in full screen? Okay.
Ready to go.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to speak. My name's Stephen Boas. I live a few blocks away from that development. I'm a renter. I got one of these in my door, so I'm directly affected. I live in the RM4 zone, and I live in a rental building that could be sold and redeveloped at essentially any time, lot assembled, according to what, you know, staff have been trying to move forward. So if I could, can, how do you scroll to the next dishonor? Okay, so this isn't affordable to me, and I don't know who this is affordable to, if you look at these figures, but 30% of 70,000 is 1,750 and not 1,869, as per the staff report. So I've got the real figures there, and that means $74,760 is the starting income for a one-bedroom. I can't afford it, I don't know who can. I work in the VFX industry, I have a degree in landscape architecture. The requirement for a full waiver of CAC is, if you look at the Vancouver Charter, there is no provision for low-cost housing for persons receiving assistance. And this isn't like you have 20% of the units for welfare rate. It's 100% market rental. Here's Section 565 of the Vancouver Charter. Charter is not met, so I don't, then there's no CACs. If we go back and look at this entire Grandview process and look at the original emerging directions here from staff, and look at the Citizens Assembly final recommendations, none of the area around this site was ever contemplated to be rezoned from RM4. It's very clear in emerging directions, it's very, very clear in the Citizens Assembly final recommendations from 2015. We'll go into that in a little bit. If you look at the final report released in June 2015, the Citizens Assembly actually recommended that, we strongly recommend that the city maintain existing RM4 height restrictions throughout Britannia Woodland, subarea, that's this area, and we expect the city to retain existing ratios of rental, co-op, and ownership units in the subarea, as well as maintain the stock of low-cost rental units. That's what the Citizens Assembly, that's what this whole process was about. And what ended up happening is, well, staff essentially said, we're not going to follow this key recommendation. We're going to introduce, in the last minute, in the last month before the council vote, we're going to introduce this six-story policy, a pace of change, let's allow for redevelopment of the RM4 zones. And you can look at it in this trace document. I have the link here, and I have provided the document to city clerk for your review. There are other key recommendations in this section of the trace document. The Citizens Assembly recommendations to preserve the RM4 were ignored, they're actually overwritten by staff. So this is not a community report, this is a staff plan. And one of the things that staff put in their plan is this assurance that after three years, there's going to be a report back on, you know, the development and the outcomes of the activity. Well, no review has been done by July 28, 2019. So the three years have passed, staff have not mentioned it, that there's a review that should be done. I believe the review should be done, and actually should be done by an independent third party, with full participation of the community, to see if what they put in the plan, or what they wrote into the plan actually is working. Here is this model, you can see this model, and if you look at these, this has been vetted by staff, I'm sure it's here, and you've got all these plexiglass boxes on there. So what does that mean? Well, is that their vision to show a six-story development on all the lots? That's a lot of displacement, because here, here's Gravely Street.
I'm not sure that we should be using a laser pointer.
Okay, then I won't.
Thank you.
There's Kitchener, Dharma, wonderful housing there, wonderful housing on Kitchener and Woodland, no, tear it down, built six stories, built six stories at Woodland and Kitchener. There are low-income people, single mother with a boy living here, barely making ends meet, and they would be displaced. A lot of the stories that you heard two nights ago, they would be repeated over and over again. This is just at the edge of the lot on Grant, here's across Kitchener, or this is Grant and Cotton, Cotton and Gravely, Cotton Drive, Gravely, Grant Street, just tear it down, put six stories.
Mr. Bonus, that's your time.
And here. So I would urge to wrap up that this proposal be rejected and the plan be revisited, and the community's wishes be put into the plan. Who will pay the price? Who's accountable, and what kind of future do you want?
Counselor Hardwick has a question for you. Counselor Hardwick.
Hi. The examples that you used were tearing down apartment buildings, and in this case, we're looking at four single-family dwellings. Yes, they are rental, and yes, they have been reasonably short-term rental, as we've heard from the applicant. Do you think there's a difference between the apartment building examples that you used and the single-family dwellings in your argument?
Well, my big concern is that there are rentals, and there are a lot of problems with this site in terms of slope. I'm sure other speakers will get to that. But the key problem that I see is that this is what people are calling a blockbuster, that this would set a huge precedent in the heart of our neighborhood, in the RM4 zone. It's a very poor site, so any other developer could come along and say, look, you allowed this rezoning on this very poor site, therefore, I've got a laneway and I've got more space and I want it. So I'm really afraid of the precedent, and I'm really afraid that the plan has not been reviewed after three years.
Your comments about the community panel and the observation that what you believed had been determined as part of that community plan and what the interpretation has been of staff, you know, them's fightin' voids, you know, where I come from. How do we reconcile this? Because, again, there is a community plan, and what we're seeing in those boxes are definitely inconsistent with certainly what I'm hearing from the community as part of that 2015-2016 process.
Okay, well, how I square it is, first of all, there were a lot of 7 to 4 and 8 to 3 votes, and I'm sure Counselor Carr and DeGenova remember the whole process of amendments in the last minute, and that community only had a month to review what planning brought back. And the Citizens Assembly was very clear on these parts of it. So this plan was passed by the Vision majority. I don't see any Vision counselors here. The Vision lost power. Like, the people of Vancouver wanted a change, so we brought in a change, and I think that Counselor Carr tried to refer this planning process or the vote off for more time. People were saying we need more time, and I think we need to. We've got the opportunity for the three-year review, and it should be done.
Mr. Bonus and Counselor Hardwick, we're not here to debate the policy or if the policy is right. We're here to discuss this development in the context of the policy.
Well, I don't want to take up my time on policy. I'd like to ask specific questions about this. The mid-block location, as opposed to arterial development for this size and scale, are you talking about blockbusting because it's mid-block, or how, why would you choose that term?
Yeah, okay, well, this is a dense site, and why I say is, just look at, I've got a couple of photos here. It's a very, very slope site, and there are a lot of difficulties here. And I say blockbusting because if it is allowed here, then this would be a precedent for all of those other rentals and other units for redevelopment. There isn't anything that is in this immediate area that has been approved. There's a lot of RM4 and a lot of sense of scale to the RM4, and I think everyone's in favor of RM4. So that's why I call it a blockbuster, and I'm really afraid of the precedent, that I could lose my housing as well.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Carr.
Thanks, Mr. Boas, and always a very detailed presentation, which is very, I'm grateful for. You know the plan quite well. I'm hoping that you can answer this question. You did make note of the plexiglass features. In your knowledge of the plan, is the introduction or the possibility of the six-story height available anywhere in the RM4 or only in limited sites?
Well, this is under a pretty complicated structure where essentially, it could be anywhere in the RM4, provided, I guess, you know, if there's no HRA or any other mitigating factor. Staff forgot to mention the First and Clark, which is sort of part of the rental units that have been added in terms of what have been approved out of five. And I think, yeah, anything would be essentially up for grabs as long as staff see that those criteria are met, that they wrote into the plan.
No limit on the number?
Well, I'm looking at the numbers, total new rental that have been put there, and we do have this three-year period, which has ended in June, so I don't know how staff will, or council will move forward. But I believe it's 150 over three years in terms of rentals that would have to be replaced. No discussion about area of those rentals.
Right, yeah. I remember that there was a certain target number, but I didn't remember if it was a max. I'll ask staff these questions afterwards, too. Were you here at the beginning? Did you hear the staff presentation in the introduction of this?
Oh, yeah, I was out there. I listened to all of it. I.
Do you remember, I'll ask them this too, but I'm just wondering if you remembered, there was something about this was one of a limited number? There was like a number of buildings of this kind, and this was the fourth out of five, or five out of six. I can't actually quite remember. I don't know if you remember that.
They forgot about First and Clark, but, yeah.
Yeah. So in your mind, did that indicate that there was only certain number of limited sites or not?
What I see here is that staff could say this is going great, and we need to just lift the numbers and so on, so it's very subject to change because it will be, should be reviewed anyways. And this could be also that it could just be getting started underway. So if developers are, see the potential of getting rezoned, it might kick into high gear.
Right, okay. I won't ask you questions about how, you know, the three-year review of the plan. I think you've raised a legitimate point. I can see that point. I'd love to have the conversation later about how that could happen within the context of the citywide plan.
Yeah, and I think what's very important to see is that staff are talking about the number of web hits and open houses and so on. But having panels at an open house does not mean that there's community buy-in. It's just that you've had panels at an open house. Like, there's a logical fallacy to claim that there's community support for this plan. And I think the Citizens Assembly report is way different from what is in the plan, especially on this point.
Yeah, I was there.
Yeah, you were there, you remember, Counselor DeGenova, I guess, Counselor Fry remembers.
I'm good on the questions. Thank you, Mr. Boas.
Counselor Boyle, questions?
Thanks. I'm just wondering, you said you live in an RM4 building in the neighborhood?
That's correct.
Do you have, I don't know how long you've been in the neighborhood, but do you have a sense of how the neighborhood reacted when that building was first proposed?
Yeah, there was a lot of concern. Actually, there was a lot of energy invested into the plan, and because the process went through the way it did, is essentially, the staff recommendations went through 7 to 4 votes, so on, people got very frustrated.
Sure, sorry, I mean, the building you're in, some of the older multifamily buildings that are now the good, affordable stock you were showing us pictures of, I'm just curious what the conversation was when those were first proposed, if you have any sense of that, but.
I think everyone's very, I've been kicked out of a rental. I used to live in Mount Pleasant, and I got my notice that I have to leave because it's going to be owner-occupied. going to be owner-occupied. I left, was empty for two months, and got rented. And I ended up in Granville Woodland about four and a half years ago because of that. And I know how tough it is to have to move and to be essentially evicted. And, yeah, and you're right, there's so much concern, and I know that there are very low-income people living there, just managing to live in these units, and they're a very precious resource, and I think this needs to be recognized and put into policy.
Yeah, and I'm also keen to protect those. I just trying to get a sense of, I think there was resistance to some of those buildings that we now want to protect, too, but I'll see what I can research online.
And as a renter, I would have no problems of having this developed as an RM4.
Okay, thanks.
Council Swanson, questions?
Yeah, could you show your, I think it was one of the first slides, the one about the charter? Could you do that again?
About the, which one? Charter?
Yeah.
Can you enlarge it? Bring it up, yeah. So this is a section.
What does it say?
Okay. So, section 565. This is actually the real technical details of what gives council the power to rezone. And, yeah, council may make bylaws and then point E. This is talking about the relaxation, and there are five points here that if there is unnecessary hardship here, there is no hardship. If this will make a contribution to conserving heritage property, there is no heritage property.
Can you read the red one?
Yeah, so that's, "Council determines that the proposed development makes provision for low-cost housing for persons receiving assistance."
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to, I missed that because I can't see the red very good.
Yeah, I apologize.
I have another question. Were you part of the Grandview planning team, the community people?
I moved to the community during the planning process, and they had chosen the 48 people in the Citizens Assembly by then, and it was 43 by the end of the process.
Okay, okay, I just was wondering. Thanks for coming and making your points.
Thank you very much.
Council Fry, questions?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Bohus, nice to see you. So, I'm quite familiar with the general area and the plan and stuff, and so that's the Britannia Woodland subarea, which, and I guess the plexi boxes are reflecting the fact that it is conditionally pre-zoned for six stories throughout, with the exception of the I areas and heritage stuff. We agree, yeah?
I wouldn't say it's pre-zoned, but there is.
Well, the plan identifies it as.
There is potential that people could point to that. Yeah, applicants could point to that.
Yeah, I mean, just, I mean, like, I'm inclined to agree with you. I didn't approve of the general plan direction.
And you saw the downtown east side local area plan and how that went.
And that, I think, is the impetus behind us all getting behind this new citywide planning process. That being said, the plan that's laid out now says up to six stories, up to 2.4 FSR in the Britannia Woodland, and of course, the proponents, Mr. McLeod and Al, have gone out and, you know, assembled these lots and, you know, so we have to now sort of address the existing policy that has been put forward, and he's been, you know, he's playing by the rules that we've, or not we, but the previous government has set out. So, I mean, I think that this scenario doesn't have to happen, but I do think also that we need to respect the fact that these guys are playing by the existing rules. What would you say to that? I mean.
Well, what I say is that there has to be an element of risk in the private sector. So to ascertain that there's always a guarantee, I think that's wrong, that there's risk in making a proposal and having it turned down. And if there isn't any risk, then, you know, that there isn't any market here. So, that's my response, and I think it's very unfortunate that the previous government or the Vision majority pushed this through the way they did.
And I think we're working to address that. I do have, you know, to acknowledge, though, that the context of what these, they're putting in the development application under the, or the zoning application under the existing. And so, I guess where I'm going with this is if they don't proceed, what's the outcome for this land? I mean.
Well, they actually looked at other scenarios there. I know RM4 is another possibility, and there have been waivers for rentals built under existing zoning, so there are other possibilities as well.
RM4 being three stories, do we think that we can?
Three, four stories, because it depends on how you handle the site condition.
It's three, under RM4.
Sorry, Mr. Bonus, I'll stop your time, but you can speak to your opinion. You can't speak for the applicant and what they have and have not looked at. Just, we're in a legal quasi-traditional.
So, I mean, I'm just, can we achieve, do you think that we can achieve that current level of affordability that we appreciate in the Woodland area in the RM3, RM4s, three-story older walk-ups in a new construction kind of opportunity if we were to take these?
That's an excellent question. I would have to do a lot of math, but I will also say that if it gets, something is rezoned to five or six stories, then the property tax base, taxes are going to go through the roof, and then the owners of those buildings are going to have to pay way more in taxes, and there's going to be a lot less in maintenance, so there's going to be a big incentive to redevelop because of that. So there's that flip side there in terms of the affordability of who already lived there, and someone has to pay the taxes. So, in terms of what, I'd really have to get back to you on that and do some analysis, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to put that sort of full context as to what we can do and what we, okay. Thanks, Mr. Bohus.
Thanks.
Thank you. That's all the questions for you. Next, we have David Holloway. Mr. Holloway, you'll have five minutes to speak, or, yes, you'll have five minutes to speak to council. The timer is just there to your right, and then council may have questions for you.
All right, thank you.
Start your timer now.
I don't anticipate being five minutes, and good evening to the council. I'm very lucky. I live in a purpose-built rental unit similar to the one being proposed. The one I live in is on Main and Kingsway, actually. And what drew me to this project was the fact that it is on a quieter side street. Obviously, at Main and Kingsway, we have ambulances, bars, shopping cart trolleys, any number of disturbances that you could not imagine. I love the building I'm in, but to have an opportunity to live in a central walkable location, as is being proposed, would be something that I couldn't even dream of. Due to the noise, I am currently thinking about relocating. However, it is obviously very difficult in this current market to find affordable rental housing. I can't comment, obviously, on the rates and the technicalities that were previously discussed. That's not my expertise, but I do support this project because of the opportunity to build secure rental housing for people like myself, young families, other people that are looking to maybe downgrade from a house, a single-family house. And the amenities that were discussed earlier and proposed by the developer with the playground are amazing and something that I would really look forward to as I start a young family here in the city. Don't really have anything further, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Kirby Young has a question for you. Go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Holloway, thanks for being here. Just a quick question, because that was something that struck me as well during the applicant's presentation about the commentary that it's not on an arterial street. And have you been looking for a while trying to find something similar to this?
Yeah, I've been in the building, it's the one with the community center there.
Yes.
I've been there for four years, so my rent is quite stable and not something I'm really looking to get away from. So ultimately, I've just decided to live with the noises that are, come with that neighborhood.
So as a possible, a prospective renter for this particular site, which is what we're discussing tonight, it would be the lack of noise? Would those be the primary benefits from your perspective?
That would be a huge benefit. That would be unbelievable, yeah.
Okay, that's really helpful. Thank you.
Thanks. Council Boyle.
Thanks, I'm wondering, have you rented in purpose-built rental and also secondary rental?
I've rented, yeah, through a private landlord, I guess, a private developed building in South Granville, and I've been in this one. I think it's a, I'm pretty sure it's a city-built building, yeah.
And can you give us a sense, from your own experience, of like, what it means in terms of stability to be in purpose-built rental versus renting out someone else's?
Well, I know there's a lot of discussion right now, especially where I was living previously at sort of 10th and Birch area, about a possible redevelopment of that area through the Broadway Skytrain corridor. And I would, I wouldn't, I guess, I can't think of the word I'm looking for, but there is impetus for someone to come by and redevelop that three-story old building that I was living in from the '70s. It didn't have much value to it, didn't have any amenities, versus this purpose-built rental building, which does feel very secure. It does feel like it's being built for the next 30, 40, 50 years.
Thanks.
On to Council Fry, please.
Mr. Holloway, thanks for joining us. Appreciate your framing it in the context of not on an arterial and especially starting a family that, I can see that being a real incentive. You mentioned appreciation for the amenities that they're going to provide in this form of childcare. I'm wondering if you might just have any thoughts on the value of private amenities versus the value of public amenities, and if there's, if you see there a need for a balance in providing both, or either or, or?
I think a balance is certainly important. As I mentioned, that building I live in at Kingsway and Main is, contains a community center, which is an unbelievable resource, a library, obviously, open to all. At the same time, having that library there, having that community center there, does attract a large number of transient people, does attract all kinds of things that might not be the most appropriate for families to be around. I know that they have shut down the bathrooms in that community center at times because of some issues that have arisen. So, some sort of balance needs to be struck. Obviously, I can't comment on that, but.
Are you aware that this project, the request out of this project is to forego about $660,000 in what we call developer cost levies, which go towards sort of public infrastructure and that kind of thing?
No, I did not know that.
Okay. Does that, do you have a thought on that, or?
That's something I would have to consider after looking at where that money would be directed, probably.
Sure, okay. Thanks, Mr. Holloway.
Thanks. On to Council Swanson.
I was just wondering, yeah, thanks for coming. What prompted you to come tonight?
I follow the news regularly. I subscribe to all the City of Vancouver emails.
You saw the ad.
Well, there's ones about track and field that I responded to recently, so all those things. I'm from the city, so.
Okay, thanks.
Active here.
Thanks very much, and that's it for questions. On to Matthew McLean, who is the third speaker, then Anne Worrell after that, and Rob Fisher.
Good evening. Thanks, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to wholeheartedly support this project. As a purpose-built rental owner in the Grandview Woodlands, one of my biggest complaints, not complaint, but sort of discussion points that I have with my own tenants, is the need for larger spaces. The buildings that we own are typically just studios and one-bedrooms, and, you know, over the last, call it, six, seven years, we probably lost about six groups that have been with us for a very long time, but just haven't been able to stay in such a small unit and have actually moved out to different suburban markets, I think Cookwillam and Richmond and Port Moody and what have you. So, looking at sort of what this project is offering to this community, I really like the fact that it's larger-oriented suites for the community and will hopefully kind of keep some of these younger families living in the core of the downtown, which, you know, that type of flight is not good for any city. Secondly, my job is to lease office spaces and buildings within sort of areas like Grandview Woodlands and Mount Pleasant and Strathcona. Another really big topic of concern or driver is finding space for employees that are being housed in these markets. I would say one of the top two, one to three concerns is always where are my employees going to live, and is it going to be close to transit? So I feel that this project, albeit it's not directly on transit, it does offer that type of product that is necessary for the growth of our economy through some of these new businesses coming into town. So I think that's a really, an important thing. Lastly, and I think for me, following the Grandview Woodland policy for the last, I don't know, five, is it five, six, seven years of this taking place through the previous council, I think as a community and as a city, we would be remiss not to start really engaging and moving forward on prescribed policy. We're at a point now where we've got some mega companies like Amazon coming into our city in the next three to four years. If we don't start building rental now, it's never going to happen, and we're not going to accommodate these people. So, that's really all I wanted to say tonight, and I do applaud the developer. I don't know where they are, but, you know, thank you for sticking with this kind of arduous program, and hopefully it gets through. Thank you.
Thanks very much, and there's no questions for you, so we'll move on to Anne Worrell.
I have a PowerPoint. Thank you very much.
PowerPoint? Okay. Take your time, I'll start the timer whenever you're ready. Good?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Anne Worrell, and I'm a resident of the 1500 block of Grand Street, and I'm opposed to the project. The 1500 block is one of the steepest blocks in the area, and with a drastic change in slope in the middle, which means that one cannot see the oncoming traffic from either end of the block. As the street is very narrow, there are often standoffs as cars try to maneuver around each other. What helps is currently there are four driveways on the north side in front of the existing four houses, and two will disappear, and three will disappear, but it will be replaced by another one. So there will be only two left, making driving even more sketchy and impractical, not to mention black ice or leaves in the fall. It's quite a risky road. One reason there is a lot of traffic, it is that there is a traffic light one block up on Commercial. So Grand is really a thoroughfare as it links Commercial and Clark Drive directly. There is no parking space. Again, we are one block away from the drive. For the moment, there are no restrictions, so navigation of the block is quite precarious. We have two multifamily dwellings on the block. In the middle, we have 14, 15, 40 grand with seven units and seven parking spaces. And then the bottom of the block, we have 1510 with 15 units and 20 parking spaces. How come that this project does not address the issues of congestion and parking and propose only 23 parking space for 35 units? The parking lot has only one single car access, so if a car wants to get in while another one wants to come out, all traffic in the street will be interrupted. And a very small detail, but garbage collection, there is no space that I see where garbage can be camped, and we cannot leave a bin such, which is so big on a steep slope like a Grand Street. Another concern I have are the trees. The block is lined on the north side by six mature and very tall elm trees that are probably more than 50 years old. The middle one will be impacted by the development project. It's not scheduled to be removed, but the canopy will have to be pruned or it will be damaged. The rendering shows a much smaller tree than what it really is. As a certified arborist, I know that for a mature tree, removal of more than 20% to 25% of its roots can weaken it to make it unsafe, and as all the roots will be removed on one side, there is an increased potential to fall over, which means that there is a high chance that this tree will be removed at the end. It's a shame because it's a benefit to the urban forest. I'm opposed to the project because of the building itself, the size, the scale, the height, totally dwarfs the houses around it. Not only dwarfs the houses around it, no transition, no attempt to integrate into the streetscape and topography. It blocks views, it blocked lives, it deprives neighbouring buildings of privacy. And I'm only talking about the grant perspective. On grant, we have, apart from the two multifamily complexes, we have character houses, different sizes, most of them pre-First World War, which means that they are solid and well-built and versatile. In total, 18 so-called single-family houses, apart from two that I know of, all of them have one, two, or three extra suites that provide long-term rental housing. I strongly believe that such a large and high block in the middle of a pocket of houses that have stood the test of time is ill-advised, because it clearly suggests that all the old houses are obsolete when they are not. Not only does it weaken the cultural heritage of the neighbourhood, which is one of its essential, essential asset, but it gentrifies the street. This typology of building is popping up all over the city along wide arterials, but here on such steep and restricted site, it might be a milestone that will have a huge impact and domino effect. This neighbourhood is not only about trees and buildings, it's about people. We have a very diverse population that include a large amount of low incomes and vulnerable people. I acknowledge that we are in the middle of a housing crisis, but this project that has already been rejected twice by the urban design panel does not serve the community it wants to settle in. Thank you very much.
You have questions from councillor Frye?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Ms. Worrell. So, as I unpack some of what you said, like the, now the first part, you were talking about a lot of traffic issues and, and congestion and the throughfare. Do you think this is something that could be managed through sort of a, like a, a road calming and a traffic plan writ large for the, the whole area?
It could be. The problem, one of the problems we're going to have in this neighbourhood is the creation of the detox centre and the social housing on First and Clark, because it will impact the entire neighbourhood for cars and parking. So, I think there will be even more challenge. So, I don't know if, I imagine there is a way to accommodate, perhaps it can be done into a one-single-direction street, but it will not allow us to go in and out as easily.
So, but maybe, maybe like permit parking on the street rather than non-permit parking?
Permit parking, but with 35 units, there will be more, more cars. The houses that have been rented, the four houses that have been rented nowadays have in between two and three cars per house on the street.
Probably too many cars for us to be subsidising with street parking, maybe I would be at the utter argument to that. Okay, so on the subject of this, of the scale, so I, I do know that just at that corner of, of like woodland, there is some pretty significant scale there already, including the BC Housing Project that's, and it, and it kind of jumps all over the place, too. It's got some lower scale and it's got some higher scale, so isn't this general scale a bit of a reflection of that?
It does, but it really dominates the streetscape, and as it will be mentioned again, after the fact that there is no lane in between Grant and Kitchener, and because the lots are very short, it makes it look like a massive building in the middle of a lot of just single houses. And all, all the, on the street, all the houses are three stories high, so there is a direct line of the, the direct roof line.
Yeah, and there, there's an urban design theory to that, I think, that follows the slope and it's a sort of sine quaetera kind of, kind of idea. I do appreciate your, your, your professional perspective on the, on the elm tree, and, and I think that's an important element to, and I'm going to take another look at, at what they're talking about as far as the tree in this component. I do note that they are talking about adding a significant number of trees. Is that a good thing?
It's always a good thing to add trees, but we know that in terms of tree benefits, mature trees provide the most benefits.
Sure, sure, yeah. But, you know, I guess mature trees start as baby trees as well, but yes, no, I, I take, thank you.
Great, thanks so much, and that's it for questions. On to Rob Fisher, number five, the sixth speaker, Doug Remington, and seventh speaker is Jackie Ross. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you.
Great. Whenever you're ready, I'll start your timer.
Understand the controller if I may, because I have to move quickly.
Okay.
How do I change slides? Oh.
The clerk can help you there.
Thank you. So, Mayor, council, thank you very much for your time. My name is Rob Fisher, I live at 1556 Kitchener Street. I've lived in the east side of Vancouver most of my life. For the last 13 years, it's been in the Britannia Woodland area of Grandview Woodland. I'm not against density. We desperately need more affordable housing in Vancouver. What I'm against is this design on this site, and I'm going to show you some very specific reasons why. In 2005, we bought the house on Kitchener Street, the green one in the centre, and we went to the city planning department with our renovation ideas. They said that we had to focus on two things. One, in raising our house, we had to maintain a consistent roof peak slope. The second was, in doing some pretty extensive exterior upgrades, we had to maintain the character appearance of the street. What you see there, those five photos were actually given to the city planning department to show the streetscape, and we had them assembled into a photo montage, so that you could get an idea of what the city was trying to preserve. Now, because our east side property line joins the, or is in alignment with the east side of the redevelopment, only three of the four houses directly backing onto the project are shown there, but at least it gives you an idea of what it should look like. So, we renovated, following the city's guidelines, and that's what we got. It's a current front view facing south, showing the four houses that would back onto the proposed building. As requested, we have a consistent roof peak slope, and we have a character streetscape. These four houses are actually only part of a cluster of characters. These four houses are part of eight character homes from the early 1900s that have been extensively restored and renovated, two of which have been on the Vancouver Heritage Tour. The challenge is, we have this proposed redevelopment. On the internet, this is known as a photobomb. In the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, this is known as a violation of clause 11.1.5, which states the plan will exclude character streetscape clusters from the RM's rezoning policy allowing up to six stories for secured market rental. Please note that this photo montage and rendering were prepared by a team of architectural professionals using the rezoning application data on the city website and surveys and elevation drawings of the four houses in front. So, in case you were wondering, it's accurate. This is another view of the character streetscape we have now, seen from the northeast facing southwest. We delivered on what the city asked for. Now, we see the plan violation showing up again. Finally, here's another view, looking from the lowest point, seen from the northwest looking southeast. And once again, here's our plan violation in the middle of a character streetscape. Now, you've seen the proposed building in action, so here's a summary of the specific challenges of this design on this unique site. Major slopes, north to south and east to west, will make this five-story proposal effectively an eight-story building when compared to its two-and-a-half to three-story neighbours. This is the only block in the entire Britannia Woodland area with this degree of grade slope across both directions. Short 99-foot lots will put the proposed building 62 feet closer to the houses it backs on than would happen with standard-length lots. Short lots are uncommon, and this block is one of only two in the entire Britannia Woodland area that also has no lane. The city's own urban design panel saw these challenges and others and judged them so significant it has twice refused to support this proposed design, calling it a poor context and neighbourhood fit. And finally, the current proposal is not affordable, and it will only make Vancouver's lack of affordable housing worse. With a 2019 living wage in Vancouver of $40,560 a year, and a September 2018 median household income in Vancouver East of $65,237 a year, most Vancouverites can't afford even a one-bedroom in this building. In effect, this proposal evicts the current 14 tenants to create a 35-unit enclave they and most Vancouverites will never be able to afford. Now, we've knocked on doors, we talked to people on the drive, we invited our neighbourhood mailing list, mailing list members to weigh in, and we circulated an internet petition. We showed people the diagram on the left, so they understood that the entire Britannia Woodland area was to plan to be six-story. We advised them this would be the first redevelopment of its kind in the area, we described the challenges of this design on this site. If they decided to sign our petition, we asked three questions to frame the answers. The result, it's actually now more than 270 people who have said no. They are renters and owners, they live in apartments, condos, social housing, townhouses and houses, and they all said no. In summary, for all the reasons shown there, the fact the neighbourhood doesn't accept it, the fact it has major technical fit issues, the fact it lacks urban design panel support for those reasons, and because it's a poor context and neighbourhood fit, and the fact that it is not affordable, I ask that you reject this redevelopment application.
Thank you so much. And I, oh, there's councillor Hardwick on for questions for you.
Hi there. Character street shape, uh, scape policies. You went by that very quickly. Could you elaborate, please?
In the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, it clearly states that character streetscape clusters will be exempted from the six-story plan that this redevelopment application is being put forward under. I can, I would consider eight character homes that have been lovingly renovated and rejuvenated over the years clustered together would qualify as a character streetscape.
Just carrying on that, certainly not reflected by the, the boxes that we see on this model here.
Uh, in, within the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, it shows something like 15 lots that are sites that have been designated as character. That model, though, and page 76 of the Grandview Woodland Community Plan show the entire Britannia Woodland area being designated to six-story apartment rentals, or six-story apartment buildings. There is a disconnect between that particular statement in the Grandview Woodland Plan and what seems to be planned in the plexiglass boxes and in the diagram on page 76 and 77.
So, just, just so I get this absolutely straight, what you're saying is that the character streetscape clusters, which is in policy, it has not, the, the location of those have not been contrasted against the six-story blocks that we see here, so...
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm trying to reconcile and how this happened, that you could have such diametrically opposed pieces of policy coexisting within a relatively small area.
I, I can't comment on how that happened. Up there, the diagram on the left shows the Britannia Woodland area, the orange, orange blocks, which, it's not a full screen, so it's tough to see, those are all six-story apartment buildings, all of them. And yet, if you go back to, no, sorry, it wasn't in the slide, if, and this is a character streetscape, there are eight houses in a row that are character. And yet, if you go to point 11 point, sorry, if you go to point 11 point, or clause 11.1.5, this is a quote, "The plan exclude, will exclude character streetscape clusters from the RM rezoning policy allowing up to six stories for secured market rental." Maybe the challenge is that for this particular rezoning application, everybody's been looking at the streetscape from Grant Street's perspective, but if you take a look at it from Kitchener Street's perspective, as you can see, there's a pretty major impact on the streetscape. It gets destroyed, which is not consistent with the Grandview Woodland Community Plan.
Now, while I know that these houses, these four houses that are part of this assembly are pre-World War II, they're not as old as the ones on Kitchener Street that are in the cluster that you're describing, correct?
Actually, my understanding, based on information from the Grandview Heritage Society, is that they are all pre-1907. I believe they are certainly down in the 1910, 1907 range. They've not been well-maintained, but there was one house of the four lots that in the previous application by the developer, it was designated by the city as retaining the greatest heritage value of the four, and it was designated that it had to be maintained as a heritage home. So, at some point, the city itself has recognised that there's heritage there.
So, if someone had wanted to take that one heritage house and, and spruce it up the way that you have with your house, they would have had to meet the conditions that you described, and yet it's possible to tear them down and put up a, in this case, a five-story rental apartment building?
Sir, I'm not sure...
If that heritage house, if they'd want to, to upgrade it and renovate it in the way that you described, the, the process that you went through, they would, they would have to go through that same process, and yet, we would just say tear it down and replace it with a five-story in this case, or a six-story according to the, the policy?
That's my understanding. I mean, previously, the city itself said there was enough heritage value that the, that that house could not be torn down as part of the development. Now, it can be. I'm not sure why that change was made.
I know we're not allowed to ask questions of staff anymore, but that's a good question.
You can actually, after this round of public input, you can ask staff more questions. Thanks so much, councillor Weep, you have questions?
Yeah, it's great seeing these pictures up, and I appreciate the time and commitment you put into bringing information to council, it's really appreciated. You had one of the pictures that had a tree, and then the building came in front of the tree, is that not the large maple that we were talking about, hoping to preserve?
Are you talking about that one?
Okay, yep. Is that tree that it's blocking, is that the tree that's...
No, it's not, because that is south of the building, and the vine maple is north of the proposed building.
So, that's part of the three that they're, the one that the previous speaker was talking about?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
The arborist that talked about the tree in the front of the building? Is that the tree?
My understanding is that, sorry, that vine maple, correct me if I'm wrong, is actually north of the building? So, that vine maple actually doesn't show here, the, they did not put it in, because it's going.
Okay.
Oh, my, sorry, you're talking about the one that Anne talked about?
Yes.
Yes, I believe that is the tree.
That is the tree that Anne's talking about?
Yeah, that Anne was concerned about, yes. I believe so. I'm sorry, is that the tree you were concerned about, Anne? The one that's peeking out just above the building? I, I think so, obviously there's got to be...
Okay, just to ensure we're getting the right, and the diagram, is that the original building, or do you know which version that is of the proposal?
That is the current, that is the current proposal.
Okay. And looking at the proposal, do you, and I know you know the neighbourhood well, do you think that the townhouse concept on the ground level is a smart proposal for the neighbourhood? Do you think that fits into the character of having that kind of three-bedroom townhouse on the ground instead of just a regular condo complex?
I can't comment about three-bedroom or two-bedroom, but I can say having individual entrances is certainly more consistent with the neighbourhood.
Okay.
I believe.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, and that's it for questions.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Doug Remington next, followed by Jackie Ross, number seven, and then number eight, Jody Stark. Doug Remington?
Doug Remington.
Okay, thanks. Up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Good evening, councilor mayor, thank you for having me this evening. Just want to say thank you to Rob and Anne, that was an excellent presentation. I don't have any slides, so we don't have to stare up the screen. They had a lot of very good technical information, I'm just going to touch on a couple of things briefly. The design of the building, the house that I've purchased, I, I live across the street from, from the development, was painstakingly restored in character with the character of the neighbourhood, and being a character house. Most of the houses on, on my side of the street are character homes, which people have restored at great cost, at the request of the city, and now we're putting in a development which doesn't fit with the character of the neighbourhood, and really devalues the fabric of the neighbourhood, the design of the neighbourhood, and the money and time and effort that those people put in to renovate to the city specifications. The Grandview Woodland Plan that we've been looking at, and this design here, it's, it's great, it, it gives you a good view of, of the wider neighbourhood, but people don't really live like that. Like, when you go home, you, you go home to your street, so your, your street is, is really where people are living, and that's what, you know, defines their, their lives at the beginning and the end of the day. And if we put something like this in, of this size and density and scale, it's going to change that for that neighbourhood. And it was brought up about the streetscape. It is a beautiful street, this street, Grant Street, that it's being built on, with... This street, Grant Street, that it's being built on, with the trees that were mentioned, the character homes, the next street over on Kitchener, that's all on the same side as Rob, as well as really, most of those streets, all the way to Britannia, are mainly single-family lots. And by putting this in, you're going to be changing the way that those streets feel. I have a dog, and as a consequence, I walk the neighborhood all the time. And we moved into this neighborhood because we wanted to start a young family, and, you know, fortunately, we've been able to do that. And I know that there's two young families that live right next to this development that's being proposed that also recently moved into the neighborhood. And so you can see that the neighborhood is maintaining a family feel. And as you walk around, you do see other families in the neighborhood. And having a development like this is going to change that. By having this added density, it's already been mentioned, calling it a blockbuster, it will change all of the surrounding single-family lots, because people aren't going to want to live next to that for a long period of time. And so that's going to be changed into four-six-story multifamily, single-bedroom, maybe double. I think that, you know, someone brought it up earlier, the townhouse on the, you know, for the front lower-level units looked fantastic, and I think that's a great design idea, but that's kind of where it ends. So taking away what could be lots for single-family homes and for renters, as already mentioned, all of these houses have rental suites in them, and, you know, potential here for adding density, because I am, I'm pro-density. And a solution to that is to allow more laneway housing, add more rental suites, and that would be a plan that the neighborhoods, the streets can absorb. You've already, you know, covered very detailed that these streets can't absorb it. They're narrow. That lot, that the developer's already said for, has already noted himself, they've had to make a bunch of compromises. It is too short. They are having to, you know, remove three driveways, which are used so people can actually pass, and they're not really taking away parking spots, because there was people that were parking in those driveways before. You're not really adding parking on the street by taking all those driveways. You're taking away opportunity for people to cross. So, you know, in summary, I'd like to say that, you know, I am very much opposed to this project, but I am pro-on-density. Thanks.
Thanks very much. I have some questions. Councillor Carr, up to five minutes.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Remington. I really appreciate your work, too, on the Grandview Woodlands Area Council. Thanks for being active in your community. My question is around the street. Did you say that you lived on that street, like across?
I live on Grant, yes.
Okay. And you live, like, across from this proposed?
Directly across.
Okay. And you said that you have renovated your home, and there are other homes that have been renovated on that, in that same block?
Yeah, so the, I said that the people that I bought it from had renovated it.
So how many, how many homes on your block, this exact block that this development is proposed for, are renovated character homes?
Off the top of my head, I can say three specifically that have been renovated in recent time.
Three recently, okay.
I mean, one was completely rebuilt. Mine, in the last five years, saw a significant renovation, and I know my two neighbors over, I've spent a lot of time in the last 20 or 30 years that they've lived there and doing multiple renovations. Again, keeping the character on the outside, but adding more livable space on the inside.
Okay. More livable space, does that include rental suites?
Correct. Yeah, there was a city-permitted rental suite added to my property.
Okay. And do you know if most of those homes on your block have rental suites? You said something to the effect that most of them do, but I'm just seeking verification?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going right up to their homes, but you can see that there is a separate entrance to the majority of them, yeah.
The majority of them, okay. You're on the Grandview Woodlands Area Council.
I'm not actually, for the record.
Ow, I thought it said this. Oh, sorry, okay.
That's okay.
In terms of, oh, then I won't ask you that question. I just was looking for an interpretation that maybe the council had talked about. Nope, that's it for my questions, thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Domino.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for being here this evening. I was just curious if you could comment, because you did comment about you didn't think this was quite the right fit for the neighborhood and the character. What do you feel would be a fit, given that, I mean, the applicant owns the properties? I asked the question earlier, you know, what could they do that currently, under the current zoning, they could build condos, so strata, up to four stories? I think our staff said, but I just wanted to.
Yeah, four stories with 10.7 meters, which is like almost half of the height that they're building right now. So should make that point.
Would that be?
And I think councillor Pete was thinking that it was more three stories. I don't know if it's three or four, but maybe it's three, you know, with a livable height, because you're only going to 10.7 meters.
So that would be preferable, in your mind?
No, I think a couple of things, you know. If it was designed to fit with the character of the neighborhood, there's a very nice townhouse development that's on cotton that is very recent with pitched roofs, with entrances in the front, and now that cotton is actually quite flat. If you look at some other developments that are on the slope, most of them do step with the slope. So combined, stepping with the slope and something that fits in with the design of the neighborhood, I think, would be most welcome.
Okay. Just to follow up to that, there's a strata building just east of there on Grant. It's three, probably about three and a half, four stories. Do you feel that it's green in color? You probably would recognize, I just don't know the actual physical address off the top of my head. Do you think it's a bit of, it's kind of mid-block?
I know the one you're talking about, yeah. That one has character.
Is that more of a fit, you feel, with the?
Yeah, with the pitched roofs.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks very much, councillor Dejana.
Hi there. Thank you very much. Thanks for your presentation and for talking about family housing and young families being able to live in Vancouver. It's one of the reasons I chose to run for council last term. I saw a lot of young families moving out of the city of Vancouver. So do you see an issue with housing being attainable for, I mean, even if it's just within reach for families to live in sort of a single-family home, which I hear it's not for a lot of them? How should we then be, like, in the context of this, our policy at the city is looking at multifamily residential as sort of the new way forward, or townhomes as a new way forward? It's like the new single-family residential, but it used to be to a family, because a lot of people can't afford that anymore. So, I mean, in looking at this, we can only look at this project in the context of the policy. I'm wondering, you said, well, you don't oppose this type of housing. It's just specifically in this place, or is it in Grandview Woodlands? I'm just trying to understand, is it just this site?
I'm very unclear on the question.
I'm just wondering if it's just this site. You said that you support density. You said that you support multifamily residential housing, is what I'd heard you say. Is it just specifically on this site that you don't find that it's the right fit? I'm not trying to put words in her mouth, I'm trying to ask.
This design on this site, I am not supportive of. I think that there is potential for this to go, this design to go on other lots, larger lots, where they're next to other four-story buildings. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I was, I was trying to understand when you said you support density for families, but you didn't support this.
Where I support density, I think that my biggest support is opening the single-family lot to more density, to add more suites, laneway housing. That's probably where my, most of my support would be.
But do you think that that would serve families? Because I see sort of family units, I don't see a lot of basement suites.
Yeah, because families can then live in the main unit, and then they're able to live on those lots by subsidizing their income with the rental income, and renters can live there as well. So it's kind of a win-win for everyone.
Okay. I'll ask staff about the stock of single-family homes with basement suites for rent, because I would suppose you'd then have to sublet the basement, if you're a renter.
Yeah, legal and illegal are, would be, you wouldn't be able to get numbers on illegals, so, which is what most of them are.
Maybe on Craigslist. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, no more questions.
Thanks.
All right, we've got Jackie Ross, Jody Stark, Eleanor Worrell. Jackie Ross, number seven. Jody Stark, number eight. Eleanor Worrell, number nine.
All right, my name is Jackie Ross. I live at 1556 Kitchener Street, and I'm opposed to this development. We all have stories about why we wanted to live on the drive. I'm a transplant from Toronto 30 years ago. My husband, Rob, grew up in Vancouver's east side. It was his dream to buy a heritage home on the drive, and we were finally able to make that happen well into his late 40s. Before that, we were renters in the area. With the encouragement of city planners, we took the worst house on the best street we can find, we lifted it up off its crumbling foundations, we ripped it back to the studs, and we gave it another 100 years. At the time, the concerns of the city centered around maintaining the streets as cohesive streetscape, maintaining trees and landscapes, and respecting our neighbors. Our friends and neighbors on Kitchener Street, all sitting there, our friends and neighbors on Kitchener Street that backs onto this development, all had that same vision. City planners encouraged a developer to buy, to build a six-story rental development on a site that is only one of two blocks in the entire 42-block Britannia Woodland area with no lane between us. It's the only site in the area with dramatic grade slopes, both east and west, north and south, and it has short 99-foot lots. This development has not just once, but twice been rejected by the Urban Design Panel, who see this development as not a good contextual fit for this site. They cite problems with major grade slopes, short lanes, sorry, short lots, no lane, and a poor contextual fit with the neighborhood. The latest design reduced the story from six to five, but the actual height only went down 7.9 feet, and it reduced the top-floor setback previously introduced to address the Urban Design Panel's initial massing and privacy concerns. The building now is only 360 square feet smaller, which means that the density was just simply moved around. The building is also 62 feet closer to the houses it backs on than it would be on a standard-sized lot with a lane. That means for me and my neighbors on the northern downslope of Kitchener, that this limited setback really blocks out the sunlight on our trees and established gardens and the landscapes that surround it, and it puts our north-facing homes in shade, not to mention privacy and noise concerns. For my neighbors on Grant, it means more traffic and dangerous driving conditions on a historic, steep, and narrow one-lane street, and it means long construction cycles that will affect parking in an already insanely parking-challenged neighborhood with existing density and visitors to the drive. I've canvassed our neighborhood, personally canvassed our neighborhood extensively with a renter from the 1300 block, Grant Street, who lives in one of the one-bedroom, three-bedroom walk-ups in the area and pays $1,100 a month for rental for her suite. It's affordable for her. With the help of other concerned residents, we got over 270 local signatures for our petition. I can tell you with great certainty, this development has little support from the homeowners and renters alike and residents surrounding this development. Hundreds of local residents have signed their opposition, and very few, in my discussions with residents, and I walked the streets and banged on every door, very few were in support. They felt this development is insensitive to their concerns and provides them with unaffordable renting, rental solutions that priced their current residents out of the market. Their key concerns were affordability and livability, dangerous driving conditions, parking, maintaining the distinct character of the neighborhood, the community plan identified as the vibe of the drive. This development will only displace the current Grant Street residents, who all say, every one of them, that they can't afford to rent in this development, even at the proposed discounted rate offered to them by the developer. The proposed redevelopment is at market rental rates and is not affordable for anyone earning East Vancouver's median household income of $65,237. This project doesn't meet the litmus test for the woodland Britannia community support. It has serious neighborhood integration issues, and it seems to me to be a pretty thorny test of the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, a plan that has given inadequate opportunity for broad community input and with policies that are contrary to the Key Citizens Assembly's recommendations on issues including height and density. One comment we got on the survey is, quote, "As a participant of the Citizens Assembly, I don't recall this density being recommended for smaller streets. This type of building is more appropriate for main streets and would choke the Grant Street and ruin the look of surrounding areas." I'm almost done. Given that there is a massive development, and it was just approved in this exact neighborhood at First and Clark, and there's ample existing zoning capacity citywide, it's really frustrating and questionable why there's such a rush by the city to accept the rezoning application in one of the most unique, affordable, livable, and high-density neighborhoods without strong community support and neighborhood support.
Thanks very much.
This development is literally a blockbuster. My neighbors and I don't say no to density. We say no to this design on this atypical site.
Thanks very much. Give me a little extra time there, and no questions from council, so thank you very much for coming in today. Just to remind council, before we move on to Ms. Stark, is that we're at quarter to nine with, what have we got left here? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, plus 17 speakers slated to speak, so I just wanted to draw that to your attention, and we go ahead with Ms. Jody Stark.
Hi, thank you. Jody, I'm a little under the weather, so please be kind. I live on Kitchener Street in the Dharma Building that's across from the houses that are going to be backed onto this proposal, and I oppose this project. First and foremost, coming here, I feel very mindful of not coming, being a NIMBY. I'm someone who really strongly is often a proponent of, like, yes, in my backyard, especially for rentals. I've supported a lot of social housing projects and do support the modular housing projects that are proposed. I supported the recent addiction treatment center at Clark and First and the immigrant services center at Victoria and 10th when I lived in that neighborhood. There's no doubt that there's a housing crisis in this city, particularly for renters, so I do support projects that provide affordable roofs over the heads of people who live and work in the city, and affordable being the key word there. So I moved to Commercial Drive when I first moved to Vancouver nearly 20 years ago, when I came to do my master's degree, and in the last 20 years, I've lived as a renter on the drive, as a student, as an artist, and working in the nonprofit sector. I've lived in extremely precarious and unsafe living conditions because of just of the lack of options, particularly in the last five to 10 years. So this project, which would essentially be servicing people that have income of over $75,000, feels pretty inappropriate when it's those earning under $60,000 that are in the greatest need in the city. People have long since complained about real estate being unaffordable, but a city can be healthy and it could be resilient if there's good, affordable, and stable rental, but that's not, that's not what this is. For many years now, I've been seeing the exodus of friends and colleagues from Vancouver in general, but from the drive in particularly due to the cost of rent. People are leaving in droves, artists who add color to the community, people who work in the nonprofit sector, who are dedicated to improving the community and our world, immigrant families who need a welcoming place to land, indigenous people who have friends and relations in the neighborhood and who have thousands more years of claim to this land than we do, and those who tirelessly work to meet our community's needs in the service sector, including temporary workers. And our community is losing all of these vital components. So we all know that this is a problem. It's a pervasive problem in the whole city. So the question is, like, when are we going to prioritize housing for these people that make up the demographic of this neighborhood and housing that is going to make our neighborhoods more affordable, not less? The Grandview Woodland Community Plan needs to make sure that these people who are at the heart of our community can continue to live there. These rental units at market rate are not affordable. These rental units at market rate are not affordable for these people, not for the average wage in the community. And the proponents earlier in their presentation mentioned that it was a 10-minute bike ride to Vancouver Community College, but really, like, no one, not no one, but likely very, very few people that go to VCC would be able to afford $1,800 a month in rent. So adding these units is going to make our community less successful, less affordable, and will displace current community members. There's also all of the reasonable arguments that you've heard tonight about, and you'll continue to hear about, why this building is inappropriate for this particular site, around the street being narrow and steep and no laneway separating the houses, and the lots are shorter than typical. Also, had to roll my eyes when the proponents suggested it was the homes' lots that they were closer to the property line. The houses were built 100 years ago, so that feels largely irrelevant. So for all the reasons that my neighbors explained, the street seems ill-suited for this building. So I tried to dig into this. I couldn't quite get the details, but my understanding also is that this building is not a zero-emission building, nor will it provide EV charging stations. So its contribution to the Greenest City Plan and the Vancouver's declared climate emergency doesn't seem to hold up. So we know that from research that supply is not the issue, that affordability is. And then the last question that I'll say is, and I don't know the details around the estimated value of the DCL at $664,000, but why wouldn't this be going to social housing and affordable housing in our community?
Great, thanks very much. You have a question from Councilor Wade.
Yeah, obviously, this is a difficult decision that we have in front of us today. One of the things that we talk about is safe, affordable rental for families. But there is a lot of people I know that are starting to move into families that have been living in a basement suite or living in a one-bedroom, and this unit is providing three-bedroom housing that has safe, secure rental, that also has a green roof with a shared amenity space, a playground.
At a very high cost.
At a cost that...
At a cost way above the average income.
I know, but there's a lot of people that want to stay in the drive, that will move out of a less expensive place because they're making more money now, that are looking for a place to keep their family in the area.
Can I steer you to a question?
Do you not see this as an option for those people that want to stay in the area, that have been there for a while, that are in less affordable places?
It sounds to me like trickle-down economics, which I don't think has served...
I'm talking about people from the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, the three-bedroom places, I totally support there being rental for families, absolutely. I just, it's at a cost that is way above the average income of the families that are living there. So, yeah, so, like, if it was affordable housing for the average income of people in the neighborhood, then my answer would be different. I do support families living there. I'm thrilled to have larger units than studios and...
Yeah, and I mean, these rents are under market.
They're not. They're market rental.
They started the DCL waiver, which, right? Right? They're above the average, but they are below market.
That wasn't my understanding, but I'm not an expert.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor DeJonge.
Thanks. I think market and what we're talking about here in the context of the policy, although there's some subsidy of affordability with the DCL waiver, is my, that's my understanding. Looking at the policies that applies now with the DCL waiver, if that amount wasn't applied, these rents would be even higher. So being here over two terms, my question is, we do see, and I looked at this through affordable homeownership in that context, we see people who are, can laugh if you want, I did when I first saw the numbers, that are overhoused. So they couldn't quite afford to move to a one-bedroom condo, but they could afford more than a one-bedroom rental. So for those people, moving in here is an option. Otherwise, it's another one-bedroom rental or single-family home.
Can I steer you to a question?
Yes. I was trying to frame it because I didn't want, I didn't want it to be wrongly framed in the context of some of the information that was there before. I'm not saying that this is below-market rental, and I'm not saying it will stay. Like, the affordability, for instance, doesn't necessarily stay after the first tenant moves out of that unit. I'm wondering, do you think that no subsidy would be better? I mean, with the affordability and what you're talking about and the notes that I have, you're saying this isn't affordable. What would, I know what you were talking about being affordable.
Yeah, I understand. It's not a matter of how much it's being subsidized, or, to be frank, whether it's market rental or not. It's the cost compared to the average income in the community, a community that has largely, as I said, supported artists and people working in the nonprofit sector and lots of, like, low-income families. Regardless of how much it's being subsidized and regardless of what market rental is, this proposal is making our community less affordable. And so to me, while we're in a housing crisis that is largely driven, in my mind, by, like, lack of affordable rental, that this is doing nothing to improve the situation. It's making it worse in our community, so.
Okay, so do you think the answer would be, in looking at the context of this project, more supply?
No, my understanding from research, and I don't have it offhand, but it's not, the supply isn't the problem. Affordability is. So I'm looking for affordable, yeah, affordable housing for families and low and middle-income earners to live in safely and comfortably in the city, the people that help run the city. I'm looking, I think that that lens needs to be, like, needs to be first and foremost when we're talking about what development projects we're going to go through.
So, thank you. I'm going to ask staff some specific questions in the window I have open about people who are overhoused and what's available in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm the Counselor Swanson. I just remind councilors that try to limit the statement part of it or context, and just get ready to the questions. Counselor Swanson?
Yeah, thanks so much for coming. I was looking up some stats for Grandview Woodlands before I came today. So the average income in Grandview Woodlands is $43,000. I was hoping you, and the average rent was for a one-bedroom was $1,181. So I was wondering if you could just go over, since everyone's talking about the dual-earner couples and stuff that can afford the expensive rentals, could you go over the people that you talked about who you've seen having to leave the community?
Oh, God, there's so, yeah, I mean, so I work in the nonprofit sector. So my community of people are people who work in the nonprofit sector and artists. I belong to both of those communities, and whether single or in partnership or starting young families or just trying to get by, people are leaving. Like, it's no secret. There's, it's really, like, one of the other speakers who mentioned, oh, and we need housing to get ready for when the people, when the Amazon staff get here. Like, to me, like, that's great. You know, I work in the nonprofit sector and I do digital engagement work, and it is so hard for us to get anyone who has specialty in, like, any of the digital work because they can't, like, they can't afford to live here, and we're paying them, like, half of what they would be earning for Amazon. So frankly, I don't really, I'm not concerned about housing issues for when Amazon gets here. It's the people, and I see it every day, like, every week, we have a staff meeting and we're waiting to hear who's leaving this week because they can't afford to live in Vancouver on the nonprofit salaries.
We had a report earlier this week about culture, and there was a stat that the average income of an artist was $22,000.
Yeah, that doesn't surprise me. So I also am on the board of an arts collective, so an industrial arts collective, a makerspace, and I can't tell you how many. I can think of four out of the 40 of us offhand that have since, in the last three or four years, have moved into their vans because that's where they could live and they want to continue making art, and that's important to them. And so they're living in vans.
Thank you, dear.
Thanks very much, and that's it for questions. So we're on to Eleanor Worrell, and then speaker number 11 is Sylvain Soler, and then Connie Sears is number 12. Just go ahead up to five minutes.
Mayor, Counselor, good evening. My name is Eleanor Worrell, and I am opposed to this project. I have resided on the commercial area for 23 years. I have lived across the proposed development for the past 13. My parents moved here to build a family home with the hopes that it would be passed on to my sister and I. An incredible amount of sweat and tears have been put into this house while at the same time contributing to the community that is my home. I walk by the same shops every day, the same people. Though we might not know each other by names, we know each other's faces and places of work, which reinforces a place of belonging. There is not one day I walk down the drive without saying hello to someone I know. These homes that are being threatened are character homes that used to house a family on the main floor and a space for the tenants. These families have now left and have been replaced with multiple youths, who have come together to share a nice home and space at an affordable rate, which is something we should all be excited about. The city loses high rates of youth who decide or need to move elsewhere because everything apart from a tiny basement apartment in South Surrey is unaffordable. These homes allow the younger demographic a chance to build a life in this city in an amazing area. They have added a lot of sense of community within the neighborhood as well as reinforce the younger community on Commercial Drive. These are youth that partake in the neighborhood. They either work on Commercial Drive, shop locally, go to the bar up the street where I work, and ensure that there is a future in the woodland community. What is being proposed to this neighborhood is the total opposite of what it needs and represents. The demographic that this project interests is not the one that lives here. We are asking that the people who live here either find the money to afford the impossible in this city or to leave so that people with higher means can take over. It isn't bringing in a younger generation because youth cannot afford the proposed rent, which starts at $1,869 a month for one bedroom. No one I know who lives in the four homes is planning on moving into this proposed site, even with the 20% discount the developer has proposed to them, because simply they cannot. This area was once known to be affordable and vibrant. This kind of project is slowly suffocating those aspects from this neighborhood. Diversity is important, but diversity also exists for those earning under $70,000, the living wage required to afford this proposal. I understand the need to densify in the city because Vancouver's population is growing, but understand that if we keep pushing our citizens out because money comes first, we will lose the respect of those who live here, have grown up here, and who have put enormous amounts of time and energy into their homes and community to make it what it is today. Thank you.
Thanks very much, and Counselor Frye has a question for you.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Worrell. So what would you like to see there?
I'm not opposed to something else being built from those homes, though I do really like what is there now. I think that they have been able to accommodate a bunch of different people, and yes, there is some coming and going, as all young people seem to do. It's fun to travel around. Some are moving for school purposes. I don't see why something so big and so massive needs to be put there instead. Why not something that a lot of people have mentioned today, something that fits the character? Though developers keep saying that they have changed the look of it, I don't see it and think Commercial Drive. I have grown up here. I have looked at it change over the past years. Some people and some developers have put a lot of effort into making sure that what is put there looks like it's meant to be there, and that's something that I need to see.
So the previous speaker, Ms. Stark, I got the impression she was more concerned maybe about the affordability component and who the housing would be for. If you were to take a pick of what is the chief concern here for you?
I think for me, it does come down to affordability because the affordability means that different people can come into the space. That is really important. A lot of people that I know that are living in these four homes, like I mentioned, are not staying. They can't stay. A lot of people that I work with can't stay in the area because they need to constantly move because the rents keep going higher and higher. This development makes all the rents go up. It's inevitable.
Lastly, you know, I'm pretty familiar, you've obviously lived the neighborhood for a long time. A lot of these older houses that, when I was younger, were packed with, like, lots of people living and split-up floors and stuff, are getting bought and converted into more, kind of, yuppie houses and less about collective living and stuff like that. Do you see that trend as well, and what do you think would be the antidote to that?
I don't know if I have a specific answer to it, to be quite honest. I just, when, thinking of it, I enjoy the idea of these homes being used by multiple people, different people, having comings and goings and being able to develop and bring more people to the community. So if that's what it takes, then that's what it takes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, and that's it for questions. On to Sylvain Soler. Oh, somebody's coming. Then followed by speaker number 12, Connie Spears, sorry, Sears. Great, come on up. Sylvain, you have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
You worship and members of council. Good evening. Sorry, I was waiting in the wall. My name is Sylvain Soler. I work for Moto, and on behalf of Moto, I would like to express my support of the current rezoning application. Moto is a member-owned car-sharing co-op. We started in the West End 22 years ago, and we support the needs of more than 20,000 drivers. So I'm a little bit out of breath. I should exercise a bit more. We exist to transform communities by connecting people with places in a way that is affordable, convenient, inclusive, and sustainable. And we do so by providing access to a network of shared vehicles. We advocate for walking, cycling, using transit, and when the trip requires a vehicle, use of a shared one. So on average, for every three households using Moto, only one owns a personal vehicle. In the area, within a five-minute walk of the site, we serve more than 200 residents. And it is intended that one Moto vehicle will be provided on-site and that more than 50 residents will be able to join Moto for free. That being said, I'm also disappointed by some of the changes that were made to the application over time, especially the increased supply of parking and its negative consequences on local traffic, on housing affordability, and on the advancement of sustainable transportation. We cannot expect from developers more affordable homes and investment in transportation alternatives and excessive supply of parking. Every parking space that is built today for a vehicle that we already do not need or won't need sometime within the next 50 years, because I expect this building would be up for that long, it is more than $40,000 that could have been saved to reduce rents or invested in alternative modes of transportation. To summarize, it's a missed opportunity. If as a community we're serious about becoming a more livable and sustainable city and doing our share to fight climate change, to leave our city, to leave our kids a better place, pardon me, we have to build better and smarter communities, and we do that by addressing the root causes of our issues and investing in solutions, not spending more and more in bandage. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's no questions for you. Appreciate you coming in this evening. Connie Sears, 13, Christopher Higgins, 14, Michelle Commons. We have Connie Sears. Christopher Higgins. Michelle Commons. Danielle Pepe. Pepe? Great, okay. So whenever you're ready to go, we've got five minutes.
Mayor and council, thank you for having us. Sorry, I forgot my glasses.
Okay, I'll stop your timer. Go right ahead.
My name is Danielle Pepe. I live on Kitchener Street. I'm one of the owner of one of the houses behind the project, the proposed development. I'm strongly opposed to development for the following reasons. to development for the following reasons. The lack of both physical and contextual fit, the concession made to the developer, and the future of our neighbourhood. We moved in 2006 on Kitchener. We purchased the house in the middle of the block that you're seeing there, the grey and blue. We lived in it a couple of years, got to know the neighbours, and renovated in between 2008 and 2010. At the bottom, you're seeing our house where we put a two-bedroom apartment that I have to say, we are renting below the market rate for one bedroom. So we are providing affordable housing. It's a nice apartment. It's got an outdoor patio, laundry, and fireplace. Our house has been on the tour, the Heritage Tour in 2013, and East Van in 2015. When we approached the city for the renovation, we were, we had a huge amount of support. We were bringing back the character of the home, opening up the porch. We reduced the back to allow our neighbours more daylight and more, more access to daylight in their, in their backyard. On the roof of the addition that we reduced, I also have a green roof that I grow vegetable and fruits in the summertime. So this is a map of the context, the context area. In red, you're seeing our house behind the, the proposal. The small grey houses are single-family home for one, two, or three family at the moment. Orange is two-story building. The three-story are in blue. And this includes the Dharma that's right in front of our place. The Dharma is a three-story plus loft condo building now. It used to be a rental. And what they've done there is the, at the twillat line, mid-block, mid, mid-building, I guess, they've dropped the building by one floor. So really going with the street side, the street slope. In green, you're seeing the four-story building. So as you can see, there's only four in close proximity to this development. So my question to you is, whoops, why are we building, we have not built up to the four-story prescribed by the ARM4 in the neighbourhood. So why are we proposing five-story on a small lot with no lane, when in actual fact, we're still building four-story project on Main arterial roads? You're seeing 9th and 41st, where the building has just been completed. Another building at 9th and 49th almost completed. And I believe you guys reviewed the proposal on 49th, one block walking away distance from the train station. And again, this is a four-story building. So why put a five-to-six story in a small street in a tight neighbourhood with still houses? There's a lack of fit in character. When you look at the Grandview Woodland OCP, the first thing you're greeted, you're being greeted with at the top is that portion of the mural that said Britannia, showing the houses with characters. And then we've got this, this large buildings in the mid-block, taking off our views. Granted, there's a tree that provides shades, but we're getting views through the tree branches, and, and now we won't be able to see that. The, I also wanted to point out that, from, whoops, from the proposal, the side windows won't have any views either at the lower level. They'd be facing right into that house because the houses are too close. There's a lack of fit also within the building itself. If you look, just an example, the, the basement, there's a whole bunch of conditions for approval that have been highlighted by engineering. The ramp is not wide enough. The parking stalls don't meet bylaws. The bicycle stall downstairs don't meet the new regulations for larger stalls, for people who have family bikes, the large one. And there's no outdoor bicycles for visitors either. So if it doesn't fit now, and you approve this, how is it going to fit later? There's all these things that need to go in.
We're just at the five minutes.
Okay. So you've seen...
That means it's kind of...
...future of the neighbourhood. We've got this small, small houses. And on the model there, this is what we're looking at. Six-story building with 14 feet in between. At least Kenby Street's got 20 feet to 30 feet in between the, the buildings.
Okay, now I've given you extra 30 seconds.
I believe that the unresolved issue should be addressed before rezoning proposal is approved. I'm not saying no to density, but rather no to this design and this site. I believe that rental and low-income housing are needed throughout the city, not just focused on one neighbourhood. By doing so, it would allow the grammars downsizing, the adults, kids who have lived in the one area, an option to remain in the same neighbourhood. I would also ask that your decision on this project be put on hold until the citywide plan towards rental is reviewed and approved. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much.
Sorry for going over time.
That's okay. And there's no questions. So that's it for this evening. Thank you very much. We have Devon Hossack, Whitmar Abelé, and Matthew Crane. Devon, Hossack. Whitmar Abelé? Sorry if I've... Hope I got your name right?
It's, good evening, your worship and councillors. My name is Whitmar Abel.
Abel.
That's okay.
Sorry about that.
I'm called worse. So my name is Whitmar Abel. I reside at 1536 Kitchener Street. I'm an architect by profession. My house backs onto 1535 Grant at the west end of the proposed development. I'm opposed to this application. So going with the old adage that picture is worth a thousand words, I'd like to show a few slides to demonstrate why this site is unsuitable for the scale of development proposed under this application. Now, you've been told, and city staff have told you, and the applicant has told you that the setbacks at the rear of the building conform to, conform to the policy, but I'd like to submit to you that while that may be technically correct, it does not comply with the spirit of the policy, which assumes a more typical lot and block configuration. So what we're seeing on the slide here is the condition as it exists. Let me just see if I can figure this out here. Okay. So we have, our lots are 99 foot in, in depth each, and back onto each other without an intervening lane. Now, how do I advance this? Okay. So the, what I'd like to submit to you is that the Grandview, the policy that was developed around the six-story in the Britannia Woodlands sub-area was based on a typical block configuration. So what we're seeing on the screen here now is the typical lot depth, which prevails in this sub-area. As was pointed out earlier, there are 42 city blocks, two of which are like ours, without a back lane and, and only 99 feet deep. So this is not a typical block. If, what we're seeing here is, is a hypothetical condition of 120-foot deep lots. And you can see that already there's a 42-foot difference and larger spread between the buildings. Sorry, three. Then there's the lane, right? So a typical block in the Britannia Woodlands sub-area has 120-foot deep lots, plus a 20-foot lane, and another 120-foot. So the difference between, in, in block depth is 62 feet. So the buildings would be a full 62 feet further apart. And a little diagram at the top, just beside, just the second one in from the left, shows what that would mean. So on the left, you have the condition as it exists now, in the proposed development, and the houses to the north. And then the diagram immediately to the right shows what it would be in, in the typical condition in the, in the Britannia Woodlands sub-area. So what that means is that in, in the typical condition, we would have view to open sky and, and access to daylight and so forth, as is indicated in this diagram. So the building in, in black is, is the, is the condition as proposed. And the building on the left, the greyed out, is, is the, is what would be the case in a typical scenario. Then, of course, there's, is the slope. Our, our block is, is unique in, with the cross-slope, and that's been talked about earlier. So that makes the, the situation even worse, in our case. So here's the problem, right? If we impose that, or superimpose that same view angle that was established in, in the, in the theoretical condition, with a typical block, we can see how that intersects with the building in the, in the existing, in the actual condition. So the building as it is, is about two and a half stories too high. So the result is that there's an unreasonable overlook and overshadowing of the residences north of the development, which severely compromises deliverability. In summary, the atypical nature of this block must be considered. To impose a typical solution on this atypical site is not in keeping with the intent of the community plan. The proposed development is a profound departure of the neighbourhood fabric. I, I want to emphasize that, I'm almost done, that I'm not opposed to densification of our neighbourhood. As an architect, I know it's necessary. I understand that. But as an architect, I also know that the proposed development is wrong fit for this site. This site is not suited to support the development of this scale. I urge councillor, please consider the unique nature of this particular block in the Britannia Woodlands sub-area, and to reject this application in its current form. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Thanks very much. You have a question from councillor Weeb.
So as part of the, the design of the building, the shared amenities space on the roof, the passive house, that I enjoy. But what you're saying is that because of the atypical form of the actual block, that this development doesn't work because of the slope components of it and the tightness. So the actual development, if it was somewhere else and looking at the architectural side of it, is well done. But you're saying that just because of the...
Well, I'm not going to, I didn't want to comment on things that were spoken about earlier. I don't think the, the, the design of the building fits the, the neighbourhood either.
Okay. So you don't think the character of the design, plus the shape in, in the block, makes sense?
Correct.
Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you. That's it for questions. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
We have Matthew Crane, and speaker number 18. Speaker number 20 is Rebecca Hartley, and 21, Louise Chapman. There you go. Great. Thanks for coming in. Up to five minutes, please.
Dear mayor and council, I'm here to, to express extreme concern about the new development, 1535 and 1557 Grand Street. Don't get me wrong, I support densification. My job depends on it. I'm in construction. But recognize, the city has a housing crisis as well. But I'm bitterly disposed, opposed to this development in its current context. It does not fit in with the community feel. If this development goes ahead, it will irrevocably damage the historic neighbourhood within its sits. The surrounding buildings are all heritage homes, full of character, history, and charm. At height of 17.3 metres, the proposed development will heavily dominate the skyline. The surrounding houses are all two-to-three-story houses max. And the block, and it will block out the sunlight for all the surrounding neighbours and homes. This issue will be accentuated, given the aspect of the land and the building being on a hill. Building size and design is completely at odds with the surrounding area. If approved, not only will it damage the character of the neighbourhood, it will set a precedent for other similar buildings to destroy such a historic neighbourhood, and the character cannot be rebuilt. Another issue to consider is the cost of this development. Vancouver needs affordable rental housing. I, I don't see affordability in this building. Rent for a one-bedroom apartment at that rate would require a salary of approximately $80,000. That's not affordable, by any means. So this building would not address Vancouver's housing crisis. Thirdly, there's the issue with parking and traffic to consider. The historic street in which the proposed development sits are all very narrow, and parking is already difficult. Building 35 units of housing in place of four houses is going to make parking for local residents and visitors to the drive almost impossible. Lastly, it gives me great concern that the city's own urban design panel has already rejected this application twice. Little has changed since these past revisions. And as it sits, the, this site would not, would be much better suited for a thoughtfully designed townhouse complex. I truly hope you will take these concerns on board and prevent this particularly development being built on this location. Thank you.
Thanks very much. There's no questions. So thanks for coming in this evening. Okay, we've got Rebecca Hartley, speaker number 20, Louise Chapman, number 21. And again, we're just at 25 after nine, slated to end at 10 o'clock this evening, just to let folks to know that. So Rebecca Hartley. Oh, okay. Louise Chapman? Oh, sorry, I didn't see you there. Rebecca Hartley, okay?
I have to gather my things to come into the room.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks. So you, up to five minutes.
Great. So greeting Mr. Mayors and members of council. I'm Rebecca Hartley, and I'm here today to voice my support for this proposal at 1535, 1557 Grant Street. I believe this building is ready to move ahead, as according to staff's policy report, it conforms to the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, and has responded to both the community and the urban design panel's concerns by reducing the height from six to five stories. While I think this loss of homes is unfortunate, I'm glad for the 35 secure rental units it will provide. That means 35 more singles, couples, and families will have the opportunity to play and make a home in the city and community they already work in. It means more families and young people will be able to stay at the city, instead of moving into the valley or even further east, leading to further congestion on our roads. And it means that 35 more units that are more affordable would be made available for others. Despite being cut back, this proposal has enhanced its residential amenities through the process as well, with a larger door, larger indoor amenity space and an outdoor play area for children. The building's inclusion of a green roof will more effectively manage rainwater on the site. And the building's design with ground-level homes and patio space will be a great place for families to interact with their community in the summer on a nice, quiet side street, instead of the noise, dust, and exhaust that is found on an arterial. Steps away from the drive, this location is very well-served by amenities, including a variety of shops and restaurants, as well as Skytrain, bus routes, and nearby bike lanes. This means nurses, police officers, office workers, and social workers will be a 20-minute bike or transit ride away from work, and gives them more time to dedicate to their families and community, instead of being stuck in traffic and contributing to greenhouse gases. Considering these positive contributions, the work that has been done to mould this proposal into something that fits into the neighbourhood, and the ongoing lineups of young and middle-aged professionals, not waiting in line for avocado and toast, but rather for a chance to live in a secure rental home, I ask that you move to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And there are no questions for you? I appreciate you coming in this evening. Thanks very much. Okay, so Louise Chapman, speaker number 21, 22, John Richards, 23, peer Daniel Cross. So Louise Chapman, please go ahead whenever you're ready. Up to five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Louise Chapman, and I am development manager at The Cult. We are a theatre and registered charity located at 1895 Venable Street in East Vancouver. I am speaking on behalf of The Cult and our executive director, Heather Redfern, this evening. Heather and our team feel that The Cult will directly benefit from this development. Our neighbourhood in East Vancouver is losing population, rather than gaining it. This is due to gentrification and also reducing diversity, and this is also reducing diversity of income in the area. It is our view that if the arts and businesses are going to thrive in our neighbourhood, we need to have more people living here, and have more housing for a range of incomes. This project will build homes for a range of incomes, and will bring more people into our neighbourhood, increasing the density and diversity of this community, and that is good for all of us.
Okay, thanks very much. You have a question from councillor Kirby Young.
Hi, thanks for being here. I know it's a long night. I'm curious...
I'm curious, typically, maybe you can comment a bit further on how your audience has changed? I'm wondering how much you've typically in the past drawn from the neighbourhood and if you see that changing with people coming further afield now, or do you just simply see attendance levelling off? Can you expand a bit?
In terms of our attendance level, it has increased over the last few years due to us building a new theatre on Commercial Drive. But in terms of the area, the density is reducing, as far as I understand it, and we rely on local people coming to our theatre and coming to see our shows and supporting the arts in the area.
Okay, so is it, so you say the attendance is to the new theatre, but at the, sort of the original, kind of the original cult?
I think as more people move away from the area, we'll see less audiences coming. We're located away from downtown of Vancouver.
So it's fair to say you're not seeing it as much now, but you're anticipating that? Is that fair?
I think that is an option in the future if this continues to happen.
Okay, thank you, that's all, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming in, no further questions.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have John Richards next, followed by Peer Daniel Kraus, number 23, and then Jared Levitin.
Your honour, this is the first time I have had the privilege of addressing you as mayor, as opposed to sitting with you in some academic boring meeting where we each got an hour to speak. So speaking for five minutes only is extremely painful, but thank you for giving me the privilege to do so. I'm going to do three points and desperately I will try to say within five minutes before you shut me up. First, I want to give a little bit of history. Two, I want to praise Andy Yen. And three, I want to talk about land prices. First, the history. I am one of the first to have been guilty of gentrifying our particular neighbourhood. I live to reveal this at one of the houses pre-World War One on the south side of Kitchener, behind the project. And when we first moved here in roughly 1980, our house cost $60,000. The land price is now 1.3 million, which is an indication of just how absurd have become land prices. At the time, I dabbled in real estate development. Just looking at me, you know that I'm not a developer. I managed to do this exercise on a lot that was kitty-corner from our house on the northwest corner of our house in the next block, in the 1400 block, which had been a crack house. And I dabbled in that because my brother is an architect. The city was extremely grateful to do this and they were extremely supportive to my dabbling in real estate to try and generate some reasonable housing. We built a fourplex within the RM4 rules. Various people tonight have done similar things. In the 1980s, there was fear that this neighbourhood was going to turn into the downtown east side. Then came stability. Then came people who did loving work on what was, coincidentally, a survival of approximately a dozen character homes on the particular block with 99-foot lots, no lane, on either the north side of Grant or the south side of Kitchener. And many of these people here have expressed their frustration at what might happen because this is, I don't think, a suitable project for this site. Second point, Andy Yen. I have the privilege, for many reasons, I am still working full-time at my job as a professor at Simon Fraser University. And Andy and I have many occasions to discuss. Andy's thesis sums up that successful neighbourhood-preserving change must be incremental. I leave it up to you ultimately to decide whether this project is incremental, and I would argue strongly it is not. That it might be considered incremental word on a main artery, but to go into the middle of the RM zoning in the Grandview Woodland area and accept this as one of the first major projects since the neighbourhood plan was approved and make this into what we do where the great majority of the RM4 housing is incrementally changed since I first came, going from threat of downtown east side, to be blunt, into much more modified accommodation while preserving a fair amount of the old housing stock, the old rental stock, which is providing admittedly not enough affordable rental. Point number three is the land price issue. The developers are making the case, which is legitimate, that they are providing rental accommodation, 35 units. But I invite you to think of it in terms of my income. Given the rents, given the CMHC preference that people not spend more than 30% of their income on housing, I could not afford the three-story. I could afford, sorry, the three-bedroom. I could afford the two-bedroom. If I was prepared to spend 40% of my income, I could afford the rent for the three-bedroom. I undoubtedly have, as an upper-middle-class professor, tenured a much above-average income. This project, if I think it proceeds, will be a blockbuster. It is quite likely to invite a lot of further requests to build six-story projects rental within the neighbourhood. It's not going to provide rental accommodation for middle-class families. Now, status quo is not particularly satisfactory, but I suspect that the status quo is providing, via the preservation of old rental stock and a considerable amount of secondary and third, either legal or illegal suites in the existing single-family homes, is providing more rental. The ultimate answer here is that we have allowed in the last decade land prices to be so high that they have destroyed the ability of developers to provide rent, which is rental accommodation, which is affordable to ordinary people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and you have a number of questions?
No questions.
Yes, you do. Councillor Carr, councillor Harwick, councillor, you've got a bunch of them.
Quizzing me.
Great, thank you, thank you very much for taking the time to come. I'm interested by what you said about in this block or nearby blocks, that you figured there's about 12 older or character homes that have been renovated. Is that, I mean, okay. There's a talk in the plan and in this staff report around this application of something called a character streetscape cluster.
Yes.
Do you have any thoughts about what that might mean? How to define it?
An excellent question. So I, as an ex-politician, whereas the mayor in his honour was right to do an academic first and then become a politician, I did it the other way around. I was a politician and then decided that was not for me and became an academic. Tough questions like that. I believe that is your decision to decide what is incremental change, in the words of Andy Yen. And this is a street that has ups and downs, it does have a large number of pre-World War One and, to a lesser extent, pre-World War Two housing stock. It is in reasonably good shape. And that is providing, I haven't done a survey of it, but a fair amount of below-market rent. I'm not saying, obviously the status quo is not satisfactory, but the case I'm putting to you is that this kind of development, where you have to have an upper-middle-class income in order to afford the rent, is not the answer. Albeit it's unsatisfactory, the status quo within 500 metres of where I live, there's a lot of old pre-World War Two rental stock in reasonably good shape, where people can afford to rent more or less, albeit plumbing isn't perfect and sometimes the wiring could be substantially improved.
So you've taught, you've called this project a blockbuster.
Yes.
So I'm going to ask you your opinion, which you don't have to give me if you don't wish, but then in that case, would you describe the block that's being blockbusted as a block with character streetscape cluster of older homes?
My thesis would be that a project such as this, inserted into the heart of the renovated pre-World War Two stock, is going, if it goes ahead, there will be a lot of incentive on developers to carry and do more, a lot more. Whereas what I interpret to be the meaning of the neighbourhood plan is that the incremental change with apartments this size would be on main arteries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hardwick.
Hi.
Hi there. I'm interested in understanding your thoughts around incrementalism and thank you for referencing Andy Yen. You're probably aware that we have a character home programme in the city that gives additional FSR to allow greater density, where you do have pre-World War Two, pre-1940s houses. Is that what you mean by incremental density? You know, say you went up to half a dozen different units on a single-family lot?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about?
Some of the housing in this particular development application is well below the RM4 limits. And certainly, there's been a lot of what I would classify as incremental development having taken place in the neighbourhood, where maybe not very good shape pre-World War Two house was demolished and in its place was a fourplex, which it's, and it doesn't create any of the problems which my neighbours have discussed all through the evening. That is incremental. Probably not diminishing the amount of relatively affordable rental, because these fourplexes often have renters living in them formally or informally.
I'm just interested in trying to figure out how we can get as many dwelling units as possible without blockbusting, I guess, mental density it's referred to in some quarters.
You have a very difficult job as a councillor. I'm not in any wanting to envy your position. I just put it to you that the idea of, in effect, transforming Grandview Woodland into, in 10 years' time, a version of Yale Town, is not a good solution. But I desperately hope there are aggressive policies to limit speculation, to limit offshore purchasing of real estate, which may slowly bring down the prices. It's always going to be a high-priced city. I grew up in Saskatchewan and we're never going to get the prices of Mootson. But there's no need for it, prices in this town to have done what they have done in the last decade. And we're living the consequences of that. So I trust that you aggressively push the province to maintain its policies to restrict speculation and real estate, restrict foreign purchasing. It's not easy.
But outside our purview of the conversation tonight, and, well, we can talk about it, but this particular rezoning application and its implications, to a person, everyone has said that they agree that we need greater density and density in this neighbourhood. And so we have to figure out how to accomplish that and hopefully in a way that doesn't bust the block. That's my concern, and so I wanted to hear...
My concern is that with approving a project of this scale in the midst of what is a mix of good character, not-so-good character, owner-owned and rental accommodation is likely to produce a Yale Town in 10 to 20 years, because the people who can afford to live in these two-bedroom apartments need to have a salary like mine, which is a professional salary as a university professor.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councillor Domodino.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I thank you, Mr Richards, for being here. I was just wanting to clarify, because you've talked about that sort of incrementalism, and I was asking a previous speaker about this, is just eastwards of you on Grant Street, there's a four-story strata building, and is that not a fit with it? Because, and I recognise that this proposed development is higher, slightly different in design and style, but I'm just curious about that. I don't know the age of that building, I've been in that building, I just don't know. But I'm just curious about the sort of the conversation we're having in terms of fit, because that's half a block up and...
It fits better. And it hasn't induced a great deal of similar four-story massing to that extent. It's the only four-story building which was built recently. The house to which the councillor is referring is on the 1600 block, north side of Grant. It has only one house to its west.
West, yeah.
It doesn't have the same problems of slope from south to north. And opposite is what I think is excellent incremental development. There is a series of, you may well be living nearby, for all I know.
I do live nearby.
A series of new developments which have been built, which have massively increased density relative to the pre-World War housing stock that was torn down. But they retain peaked roofs, they maintain small front gardens, they have many characteristics which are similar to the old, original housing stock. I think that is the kind of incremental development. If we're talking about going east of Commercial into, I believe it's R2T, I keep thinking of Space Wars films when I start thinking of these zonings with RT in them. But there must be 50 incremental densification projects underway between Commercial Drive and Nanaimo, where an old character, pre-World War Two house has been torn down in favour of a duplex or a fourplex that is still within the bounds of the character and does not give the feel at all of being a quote-unquote blockbuster.
Got it, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
I don't believe I have clarified it. I still think you, as councillors, have a very difficult job in deciding how to interpret what I think Andy Yen is right about, namely, what we want is incremental change, but if you introduce blockbusting, dramatic change, you wind up destroying neighbourhoods.
Just one more question from councillor Kirby Young.
Good evening, Mr Richards, over here.
Yes.
Thanks for being here. You mentioned when you came in, I think I'm capturing your words, when you said that you were part of the quote gentrification of the neighbourhood at the time?
Like everybody else. I came here partly because I really wanted to live in the centre of the city.
Right.
What I could afford.
And the neighbourhood was quite different then, it sounds like, than it is now. So how was that received, just coming in as the gentrifier? It's totally up to you if you want to answer that, but I'm curious what you're...
My next-door neighbour at that time was an old gentleman who was about to sell his house and expected to make a fair bit of money if it was turned into a three-story. He was deeply worried about the crack house going diagonally across and wondered whether the neighbourhood might go downhill. I didn't feel the resentment and obviously it was quite ambiguous as what was going to happen to this particular street. It might well have all turned into more three-story walk-ups, as which was the norm in many ways in the neighbourhood, or, I don't know.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thanks for being here.
Councillor Frye.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks Professor Richards. I had to Google you. After I saw the mirror light up, I'm like, oh, who is this guy?
We've had lots of arguments.
Yeah. Social poli...
You can tell you bad things as well as good.
Absolutely.
Social policy and with a bit of an indigenous bent, and I do know that that particular end of the Britannia slope does have, the Britannia Woodland slope has a higher indigenous population, a lot of vulnerable populations.
There's an urban reserve building down on the 1400 block, which I supported.
Yeah, no, I'm quite familiar with it. So I'm wondering, how do we, I mean, I consider that one of the more fragile neighbourhoods in the Granview Woodland area because of that context and because of the kind of potential for gentrification. And I see that this development does bring in a higher income, you know, and presumably after the first year, even higher incomes, and how does that social mix work? How have you observed, you've been there for a while?
Yeah, for a long time.
So those social housing projects are there to stay and there's that population that's there. How is the interaction of... How is, how is the interaction of, of money coming into that neighborhood? Obviously, as housing prices, as we've seen, a lot of these houses have been fixed up and presumably some of them are being sold for higher and higher amounts, and this is the sort of rolling up of gentrification. How do we, how do we, how are you seeing that interact as?
There is some interaction with the Urban Reserve. When I walk my dog in the morning, I chat with some of the people at that, at that building. I'm delighted to do so, and there's, I'd like more interaction, but no, there certainly are cultural differences between me, the white Anglo-Saxon Protestant upper-middle-class professional, and people in an Urban Reserve, albeit I'm, I'm quite conscious of all of that from my experience in history as a politician in Saskatchewan. It's good. I'm glad it's there. What I'm, the heart of what I'm arguing to you is, let's not be glib about how we can just create rental accommodation such as this, this project envisions that could only be affordable to people who have my income. That's not solving anything.
So.
That's just creating Yale Town in Grandview Woodland.
Okay, okay. I hear what you're saying. So you'd prefer to see something that created more, was created, was accessible to a more moderate income?
Incrementally and slowly, which involves, I mean, many of my neighbors on 1500 block are renting, I'm guessing that it's considerably below the rents being expected in this project. Immediately to the east of us, there's a, an big old house which is rented, there's a two-story 1940s vintage apartment complex which is providing some semi-affordable rent. I, I want those to stay.
Would you?
What I envision happening if we proceed with this kind of block busting project, which can only be rented to people who have upper-middle-class income, is that the neighborhood changes.
So, yes, where I'm going with this, would you be okay with, with the scale and the mass and the design if it achieves more sort of a, of a social balance in the, in income affordability?
And, I mean, you are in a, between the devil and the deep blue sea. I mean, there's a great pressure for more rental, rental accommodation. It is virtually impossible, given land prices, to generate new market housing that is affordable. I think that, I think the best bet that we've got, which is certainly a second-best option, is to preserve the neighborhood more or less, let it incrementally change. There is a lot of informal renting going on in legal and semi-legal fashion in all of these homes that is unlikely to take place if we repeat this six-story venture right around Grandview Woodland.
But if that six-story venture achieves more of that affordable rental, would you be okay with it?
Well, selfishly, I'd prefer that it not be six stories. I mean, that's, I think, there's the, my neighbors who are gardeners and who are concerned about the trees being preserved, those are all legitimate. And then these people came, including me and my wife, on the city's hope to stabilize what was potentially in the 1980s going to turn into a very ugly scene.
We're at the five minutes. Thanks very much, Councillor Kirby Young.
We're in procedure.
Sure.
I'm wondering, given the time, and we're scheduled to finish at 10:00 PM, if we might, council might entertain a motion to extend tonight to complete the speakers and then refer debate and decision to the October 1st council meeting.
I have been taking some polling around, just informally, I'm sorry I didn't get to you yet, but it, it doesn't seem to be a ton of will for that. But of course, we could always entertain a motion anytime, that's your privilege. Professor Richards, my dear colleague, that's it for you?
I'm just turning into a professor. I'm wasting all your time and talking.
So that's it for questions for you. We're just trying to decide, I guess, if we're going to extend beyond 10 o'clock. So thanks very much for coming in, and we'll drop down and see you soon.
And, and speaking to that point, I was hoping that we wouldn't have to, out of respect, but when I have a few speakers left, it saves them coming back for another day. So that was the, that was the premise behind.
Thank you. I understand. Thanks very much. Well, we're at that time, like you said, at both 5:00 to 10:00, and I see our next speaker coming up, but we do have to decide whether we're going to extend. And I am getting some head shakes that it's a no. A lot of head shakes that there's a yes. So again, we need unanimous support to extend beyond 10 o'clock in order to hear the rest of the speakers, and of course, we could always delay the debate and decision. The, I will tell you that, just on the technical side of things, if we don't get through this speakers this evening, they were coming back on September 17th to finish. And if we finish speakers tonight, we could come back on October 1st for debate and decision. So there is always the option of voting to, some, everybody doesn't say no, and then perhaps people that had to leave reviewing the tape, as long as we maintain quorum. So, let's, so is, is the motion moved? Okay, great. Thank you then. Well, do we have a second here for that one? Okay. Councillor Hardwick's first. So we'll just need a show of hands, who's okay with extending till we hear the speakers? Finished hearing speakers? Okay. And I don't have unanimity here. Okay, so that's it. So we'll be finishing at 10 o'clock this evening. And we do have enough time, perhaps, to get through you, sir, and then, but we do have a hard stop at 10 o'clock, so you may not get any questions. All right. So you are Mr. Pure Daniel?
House is the last name, yes.
Okay, go right ahead. You've got a five.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think we'll be debating less the character and design of this proposal, but more the affordability. I'm here with BC Nonprofit Housing Association in my role as policy manager, and speaking on behalf of our members from the nonprofit sector to show support for this proposed market rental development, moving forward under the Rental 100 program. As association, we represent 450 nonprofits operating affordable housing across the province and are closely collaborating with many partners who share our mission to offer safe, secure, and affordable homes to everyone. Today, we are not only speaking on behalf of our members, but we're also here as neighbors as our offices are located 400 meters, that's three blocks from the project site. If I had a laser pointer, which I wouldn't be pointing at the same, at the model, of course, it'd be just to the left, up on the block. In our opinion, this project is an opportunity for the City of Vancouver to show continued leadership in responding to one of the most critical issues facing our, our city, which is obviously housing affordability and our housing crisis. While our primary interest is for the creation of nonprofit rental units, which is not part of this particular project, we also strongly believe in the importance of creating more housing choice on a whole spectrum of tenures. This secured market rental housing project will create more housing stock that takes pressure off the existing older housing stock in our city. Thirty-five units are not going to solve the city's housing crisis, but it's a step in the right direction. Our landlocked region is growing, and it is in need of many, many, many more homes. And our neighborhood should not be an exception to this principle. In 2017, BC Nonprofit Housing Association published, published its Affordable Housing Plan for BC, where we tried to quantify the investment needed in the region. The report documented the need for an additional 54,000 new rental homes in Metro Vancouver over 10 years to address housing demand for those in the missing middle and in core housing need. The demand for purpose-built rental units is not being met in the city as reflected in continuously high vacancy rates. The proposed development provides for 35 of these new affordable, to some people, rental homes for middle-income households in the face of our housing crisis. Thirty-five units may seem like a small contribution, but it is, it is a significant addition for every one of the people who will find a home there. We do understand that some of our neighbors are expressing concerns about the impacts of the project on the community, and it is acknowledged from our perspective that this proposal meets your affordable housing policies and that the applicant went above and beyond to meet the city's requirements and listened to feedback to your, to the original application by decreasing the height of the building, ensuring a balance of unit sizes with 11 two-bedroom and nine-three-bedroom units, and providing for space required by families. The site is ideally located within walking distance to buses and skytrain services and schools.
I'm going to have to stop you there because we, we've actually run out of time. We just have 30 seconds left, and I need a motion to recess this meeting until September 17th at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Second here for that. Second, thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? If one, two opposed, I think I'm going to need a show of hands. So all in favor of recessing until September 17th at 6:00 PM? All, any opposed?
One of the expectations is that.
Okay. Well, I don't know. We've hit 10 o'clock now. Okay, so legally, we have to state when this resumes. And it's September 17th at 6:00 PM. So that's why, and if we don't vote yes, then we're breaking the law. So, so I guess that's what's happening. So all in favor then, September 16th at, 17th at 6:00 PM? Any opposed? Okay, that's passed. Thanks very much. And just an explanation for you, sir, is that you will have your remaining minute and a half on, at 6:00 PM, and then around, around the questions as well, if that's, and plus, we will preserve the list. The list does, of course, stay open for other people that would like to register to speak to. Anything else?
I was excited to debate housing affordability.
And just a reminder to council that this is an open, now we're, we're open, and we shouldn't talk to any people involved with this, with this application. Of course, you are free to send questions to staff through the city manager. Thanks very much.
I'm not bothering either way, ever. No, I'm not. I'm. We must have. 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 I just gave it, yeah. I saw her out. I saw, I thought you had already. Sorry about that. Oh, it's really. Oh. You can send it. Oh, the clerk can help you. If you can bring it in on everything for our person, that'd be. Just finishing a conversation here. Okay, thanks a lot. You're enjoying the job. And I got really good, I practiced that walk. I really did. I did, I did. I did. I think I'm, I think I'm. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[1572.12]
Thank you.